As Mayor, I call this meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being broadcast over the city's cable channel and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. I ask the clerk of council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting.
Mayor Oakes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Robertson. Ms. Doll.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Ms. Darby.
Here.
Ms. Mead.
Here.
Mr. Claffey.
Here.
I ask that the city manager, Steve Rosenberg, note the participation of any city officials or colleagues or anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Maggie Reagan, the Commissioner of Revenue will be participating in this evening's meetings on the Zoom platform, as will individuals Beth Leader and Chuck Struck, who will be participating in the regular meeting during the matter concerning the appeal from the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you. Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice provided to members of city council. In addition to limited public seating in City Hall, access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During this work session, as in the past, there will be no opportunity for public comment. Public comment will be received during council's regular meeting, which will begin at 7:30 PM. Instructions for public comment by telephone can be found on Agenda for the Regular Meeting and on council's website at www.ci.stanton.v.a.us backslash government backslash city dash council. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting, although being conducted in person, is also being conducted by Zoom with virtual participation by certain members of city council, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which is part of the total circumstances makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with City Council's Ordinance 2004, 2020-04 regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.v.a.us backslash C-O-G-O-R-D 2020 dash 04. And with that, I would like to make a few comments about wearing masks. If you are coming into City Hall, please make sure that you are wearing a mask. If you come into the chambers, please have the mask on. Have the mask on anywhere within City Hall. You may take the mask off if you are speaking at the podium. We do have sanitizer at the podium. They are in the form of a wipe if you feel the need to wipe the microphone down before and after speaking. Once you have finished speaking, please put your mask back on for the safety of everyone during the pandemic. Also, I would like to advise the council, following parliamentary procedure, if you would like to be recognized, please indicate so by letting the mayor know, and I will recognize you to speak. With that said, we're moving on to Vice Mayor Robertson. Can you please make the motion concerning our substitute clerk of council?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move that Kim Cormier be appointed as Acting Clerk of Council for the recordation of the proceedings of council in its work session and regular meeting of August 13th, 2020, and that she be authorized and directed to sign and execute such documents as are necessary and proper regarding the presence of council members, a quorum, consideration, and voting.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Cormier, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Hearing none.
All right, the first item on the work session agenda is the consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas. I'll entertain a motion to accept both agendas.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Darby.
I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda as presented.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
Councilman Holmes, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Cormier, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number two for the work session and item number B for the regular meeting, a discussion of refund of bank franchise tax to branch banking and trust company and related ordinance. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commissioner of the Revenue, Maggie Reagan, will present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Can you hear me?
Just fine, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Madam Mayor, members of council, you have attached to your briefing and ordinance to consider at this evening's meeting that directs the city to make a refund of bank franchise taxes to BBNT, now operating as Truist Bank, in the amount of $29,355. For background on this item, in the state code 581-1208 allows for the city to impose a tax at 80% of the state rate of tax on net capital of banks with a presence in the city. And all of the banks that have a presence in the city file a bank franchise tax return with me by March 1st of each year, and then I certify an assessment, the treasurer bills those taxes, and the taxes are paid by June 1st of each year. In 2015, I received a letter from BBNT notifying us that they would be submitting amended returns for the years 2012, 13, and 14 to the Department of Taxation. And at some point, they submitted those letters and requests for an adjustment of their net assets to the Department of Tax. After several years of information flowing back and forth between the bank and the Department of Taxation, the department issued a letter of determination in October of 2019 to the bank notifying them of the amounts that would then be refunded to them as directed by the Department of Taxation from the localities. I then received a letter in February of 2020 directing us of the amount of refund that we would need to issue to BBNT for those years 2012, 13, and 14. I felt it necessary to do further research after receiving that letter and did so through multiple contacts with other localities and attorneys that were involved in the situation. And I have exhausted what I thought might be some other options, but I believe at this time that the ordinance should be adopted and that refund paid to BBNT. They had provided, through discussions with the taxation department, that they would not be assessing any refund of interest or adding any interest to the refunds based on the fact that these taxes were not erroneously assessed by the locality, but it was through a determination from the Department of Taxation. So I do not believe any interest is owed. And the code section 5813990 provides that the governing body of any city or county may provide by ordinance for the refund of any taxes erroneously paid, and that draft ordinance is before you this evening. And I'm happy to answer any further questions that you might have on the situation.
Are there any questions by council members? Councilwoman Darby.
Ms. Reagan, I have one question. Do you, has this ever happened before in your time in this role, and do you think that this is something that could happen again?
It has not, and that was one of the questions that I asked of the Department of Taxation. And basically, what I believe happened in this situation was that there were some, a situation where the bank determined that they had overstated their assets based on some legal precedent and that they made that shift. And I did go back and specifically speak to the Department of Taxation and say, look, you know, if we're receiving this request for 12, 13, and 14, are we going to now receive the same requests for the ensuing years? And I have been told that that is not the case.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
And Councilman Darby, I mean, excuse me, Councilman Claffey, forgive me.
Maggie, as a follow-up to that, are we setting precedent here? Are there going to be other banks that are going to be saying, oh, look at all this money that Truist got? And are we opening up a big box here?
I honestly don't know the answer to that, and it really is an issue that has to be taken up with the Department of Taxation as opposed to being taken up with us here locally. We, and it's hard to tell if it's going to happen again. I do think it was an irregular situation, and I have not heard from any other banks or had any other requests from other banks, nor have I been notified of any other appeals filed with the Department of Taxation at this time.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Maggie, Ms. Reagan, I reckon, when I first saw the letter, I said, okay, so we did something wrong, whatever, but it's not just us. I mean, I looked at the bottom, I mean, we're talking millions and millions and millions of dollars from all these different localities. I mean, what, I mean, is it, was it so much our fault or their fault?
Oh, it didn't have anything to do with, it's not the fault of the locality. Essentially, my understanding is that they overvalued some assets and reported some assets that they felt they should not have reported, and also failed to take credit for some historic tax credits that they had issued through their bank. So again, I do think it's a one-time situation, but it is an awful lot of money involved, yes.
Ms. Reagan, can you please advise us how much the total amount again is for the city of Stanton?
$29,355 for the three years.
Okay. Vice Mayor Robertson.
Let me ask you one other question, and this may not even be a possibility, but what if, what if we said, sorry, I mean, is that even, you know, are we going to get the federal government, the state government come down on us like, you know?
Well, I suspect, I don't think it's an option to say no. I feel like I've honestly exhausted every opportunity or thought process to refute this request. I've spoken with attorneys who were involved in the situation from other localities, and we've had quite a bit of back and forth discussion. And I believe that the situation is unavoidable at this point in time. And I don't like to refund money any more than anybody else does, but I do feel that the Department of Taxation has made this determination and directed us to do it, and that we don't really have a choice in the matter.
Okay. All right, any further questions? All right, this will be on the regular agenda under item B for a vote. Moving on to item number three, update on Central Avenue Streetscape Project. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nikki Mills, the city engineer, will present this item.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to give you guys an update on this project. We've, I thought four years ago when I came to work here that we would be getting ready to start work on Central Avenue. Now, four years later, I think we are. We have submitted our package to VDOT. We've asked for their authorization to award a contract. That apparent low responsive bidder is Messer Contracting, and, you know, they've got their VDOT prequalification. They are ready to go to work. They followed up with V. Want to know when they can start, and we have followed up with VDOT. We've drafted an outreach letter, have preparations in the works for a neighborhood meeting. We're gearing up, just waiting on VDOT to pull the trigger for us. Be glad to entertain any questions y'all might have.
Okay, are there any questions by council members? Councilwoman Darby.
Yes, so this started four years ago?
It started much longer ago than that.
Okay.
I've been here four years.
And it's been going since, and just what has been, what's caused the delay?
Primarily easement acquisition is what I've spent most of the effort on the last four years. And there's a lot of, a lot of boxes you have to check because of the federal funds, the state funds. You have NICA act requirements you have to deal with, so, you know, when there are project delays, some of the certifications have to be renewed, that sort of thing. So a lot of different factors.
And the money that has been budgeted and appropriated, is that, that's in the budget cycle that we're currently in?
I'll defer to Phil on that. I understand the project is fully funded.
Madam Darby, yes, we do have the funding fully reserved in the CIP. It's been appropriated in prior periods, so we are 100% ready to go on that aspect.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Great. Councilman Holmes.
I was just going to say, does that include the 21% increase? Okay.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Can you tell me what, I see at first, there was 300, what we wrote, the 100% local matching was 339.57. So that's Phil, that is what we currently have that's dedicated to that, right? But now, is there an increase, or is there more to that than 339? I've heard figures in four something or...
No, this is the amount that we're currently required, and we do have that reserved, sir.
That is reserved as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilman Claffey.
I guess this would be directed towards Nikki Mills. In light of last week's flood disaster where we saw bricks all over downtown Stanton, and I see that we're expanding, this is going to be another brick sidewalk, brick crosswalk. Are there any realizations that maybe bricks are not the easiest thing to deal with and cheapest? I mean, I know they aesthetically are very pleasing, but we, our brick sidewalks took a hit this week, and are we going to continue going down this route? I'm sure this project was approved well and visualized well before we had Saturday night's disaster. But going forward, are we going to continue doing bricks?
I can't answer that question on my own. I can tell you that engineering is looking at stormwater, analyzing this event. We've documented high water marks. We're looking at the drainage basin maps, trying to find solutions. You know, we do have a lot of stormwater obligations and a little bit of funding, so we're trying to make sure we spend that funding wisely and get the best impact. We're going to have flooding in some events, probably on Central Avenue. It used to be called Water Street. So, you know, we have to weigh the cost of these events. We can't really predict them, but everybody likes our brick sidewalks. I think they're, they've been good for business. And like I say, we are working to try to understand the stormwater issues and to be as proactive as we can with dealing with those issues.
I've seen the total cost of this is now up to $2,434,000. How much of that would be attributed to bricks?
I can't answer that question off the top of my head. I can get you that answer.
Well, I'm just wondering if it's 20%, 10%? You know, if it's miniscule, it's no big deal.
A big part of the cost is the electrical relocation, undergrounding those utilities. Traffic control is a major component. The brick sidewalks, I don't think are actually all that big a piece of puzzle. Again, I can't give you a number off the top of my head. I'm not that good.
Okay, all right, just curious. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Councilman Holmes.
Will most of the utilities be under the sidewalk?
Yes.
So I guess if they're brick, it makes it easier to get it up and put it back down as opposed to jackhammering or something like that.
Brick are certainly easier than concrete in some ways.
Yeah, but also, is COVID-19, is that going to affect the cost of construction or anything like that? Because, you know, I know it's messed up the supply lines along a lot of things. How do we look at this affecting this, making the price go up or down?
Well, as long as we award a contract before this bid expires, and we don't have any change orders or fixed should-be costs, you know, you can always encounter unforeseen conditions that the contractor would have a legitimate claim for extra money. You know, we've done what we can to minimize those, but no, I do not see a direct impact from COVID to this project. We're actually seeing some lower costs right now, but some of the contractors at least aren't quite as busy.
But you know, I know this, the company's out of Glen Allen, but will they employ anybody locally? I mean, will they hire people here to do this work, or will they bring their whole crew, or, you know?
They are required to use disadvantaged businesses and enterprises, and I do believe at least one of the subcontractors for that is local. I'd have to verify that for you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Roberts.
Terry, this is, you know, and you may have, when you said something, and I'm probably going to, this will be insidious, but what about, you know, they make concrete, they make concrete that looks an awful lot like brick these days. I mean, is that even a possibility that would forego it washing up and ending up down on Johnson Street or wherever?
Concrete is an option. We actually have, we've issued an addendum to our contract documents to use concrete pavers in the crosswalks. They'll look similar to the brick, but they'll hold up a lot better. Public Works expressed a preference for those. I don't know if you guys have looked closely at the crosswalk at Central and 50 yet, but brick pavers in those crosswalks, we take a beating.
Yeah.
We think the concrete will stand up better and probably be harder for the stormwater pullouts, so.
Okay, all right. I thank you.
Councilwoman Darby.
Well, I was just wanting to know, like, obviously, this has been something we've tried to get done and, you know, for beautification purposes, sounds like a good thing, but given the light of everything else that is going on, what if we just said, we're not ready to do this right now? What happens then? Like, if this expires? Where, how does that work?
The project is funded under several different programs. One of VDOT's big initiatives is get the money spent, get the projects built. So, once they set a contract completion date, they like to meet it. They have what they call a project dashboard, where they have green lights, orange lights, or yellow lights, and red lights. Then we're trying to keep the project in the green for go and on schedule, so I can't tell you off the top of my head what the direct impacts would be, first of all, to Central Avenue, but maybe more importantly, to our future funding applications for grant money, because VDOT has an obligation to federal highway to get the money spent. We identify a project, you know, and get them to approve that they want it to go through to completion, so that's another one of those questions I could answer better in detail later. You guys ask deep questions.
Councilman Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Doll. Also, do the brick sidewalks also help with water runoff?
They can. We did have permeable pavers in the project, but one of the challenges on Central Avenue is it's an old street. It's got a lot of unknowns, a lot of history under that asphalt. So the contractors were telling us, the first time we bid it last fall, that they were putting a premium on those permeable pavers because you're looking at a section that's this deep, and the contractors really couldn't say what they were going to get into. They priced it like Pandora's Box. So that was one element of the project that got value engineered out, was those permeable pavers. Those do capture a significant amount of runoff and store it and release it slowly. The brick sidewalks, not so much.
Any additional questions?
Mayor Oakes.
Councilwoman Mead.
Yes, I was just curious, Nikki, how did those permeable pavers do down at the wharf through the storm?
Right after the storm, I was down there, looked at them, and they were buried in mud. I have not been back down to see the cleaned up surface, but as far as I know, none of them moved. I think most of the water that got to the wharf was pretty still. I think the biggest risk to those pavers is being clogged with mud, so yet to see that.
Thank you. Any additional questions? I actually have a question. I read that the lighting, that we were looking towards historical style lighting, does this lighting include like dark skies, now known as safe lighting, low lighting?
The fixtures that we have selected are full sky, they're dark sky friendly, if not 100% black. There's a, there's a lot of terminology there. We spent a lot of time on making sure those lights were as dark sky friendly as we could make them. They are what's called full cutoff fixtures, so the bulb is up inside the housing. That tends to direct all the light downward, so.
Just like on Churchville Avenue?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Some of the fixtures that we have on Churchville and Beverly are a little bit different. They're not quite full cutoff. These are actually more dark sky friendly than some of the pictures that we have.
Okay, all right. Mr. Treyor, I have a question for you. I read that our matching amount, $339,057, that's one of the matching amounts. I also read $184,838. So is our total share 523,895?
Well, the $184,000 is primarily the time invested with the, with the department along with, yeah, okay. And so the combined would be upwards of $500,000, yes.
Okay, now, when you said time invested, you mean?
Staff time.
Already invested? Okay, all right. All right, if there are no other questions, thank you for the update, and that takes us on to the next item, which is item number four, an update on the Stanton Crossing Economic Development and Business Plan. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Billy Vaughn, the city's Director of Economic Development, will introduce this item.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thanks for the opportunity to come, you invited to provide a brief overview of the activities and efforts of Stanton Crossing. You have in your packets, staffs, summary of efforts, but prior to getting into those, I have with us tonight Tim Davie of the Timmins Group. His company was responsible for assisting the city in the development of the Stanton Crossing Development Business Plan, which involved the community and also the EDA and council, and both of those bodies adopted the plan, I think, in 2019. So he's going to provide a brief presentation, which was emailed to all council members, I believe, and you have a copy in front of you. Since we're not doing PowerPoint, the pages are numbered, so we'll try to keep track with Tim as he moves through the presentation. And you can either ask questions during the presentation, or we can take questions at the end, but we'll both be available for that.
Thank you.
Tim Davie.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of council. It's my pleasure to be here today. I'm one of the principals with Timmins Group, and we're very proud to have both done the business plan that we're going to talk about, and then also have helped the city try to advance things. And as Billy said, I'll just try to quickly go through a little bit of the presentation and roll our clocks back a little bit on page one, or page two, rather. We talked about when we were convening to really go ahead and start this planning process. Some people would call a plan for a piece of real estate a master plan. Our approach is always to call it really a business plan, because obviously, the master plan itself is part of it, but we want to always make sure that our business plans are a... are aligned both with not only the, the real estate itself, but the opportunities that they present themselves in economic development. And that's sort of what we started talking about in November of two thousand eighteen, which now feels like a really long time ago. Um, and we started with the kickoff meeting, as Billy mentioned, stakeholders, which I'll talk about in a minute. We drafted that business plan, uh, embedded that with a number of different stakeholders. We made a presentation back in February of two thousand nineteen, uh, and then the city's been working to execute some of those, um, plans and some of those recommended steps. Uh, and like I said before, I'm very proud to be here in front of you now and sort of check in again on that business plan and sort of how things are going. Page three talked about, uh, starts talking just a little bit about the process, which I wanted to just sort of recall to get it fresh in our minds. Uh, the stakeholders, um, are listed on the next page and I'll go through those with you. Uh, but as I said before, obviously every piece of property provides different physical opportunities. Uh, I'm very familiar with the site as many of you are and those physical opportunities you try to take advantage of. Um, we wanted to take advantage of the work that was already underway. We think that's a lot and it's very important in an economic development plan. The business planning philosophy that we try to bring forward is to start thinking about business terms, much like a private developer would think about business terms. And obviously as a city, your pros are different than what a private developer is looking for in their real estate development projects. And we talked a lot about what kind of a return the city would be asking for. Uh, and then one theme throughout that process is we were looking for some immediate success because we think that's a great way. Obviously the economy was fantastic back then. We were trying to take advantage of a lot of things going on at the state, uh, and we wanted to basically swim in the direction of the momentum and try to take advantage of that. The next page, um, talks about the actual stakeholders who were involved and that remains an important element of any business planning process right now, not only council, the EDA, the city staff, Virginia Economic Development Partnership, I'm going to talk about a little bit more later in the presentation. Your Shenandoah Valley Partnership was engaged from day one. We think it's an important element to bring private developers to the table at the very beginning, which we did, and we continue to maintain discussion with some of those private developers. And again, for me, what's always important is to have a clear definition of success in economic development, which is sometimes misunderstood because some people believe everything is economic development. Next slide, slide number five, for me, sort of drills it down to how do you measure success? And what we concluded, the opportunity was in Stanton Crossing was to create almost two million square feet of quality economic development, over three thousand jobs, uh, and the opportunity to one day be trying to cash a check for up to four million dollars a year in taxes for the city. That's what economic development means to me and that's what we're trying to put in place. Slide six and slide seven show you a little bit of the master plans, um, that were the conclusion of the process. These were not proposed and, and asked people to respond to them. These really were the outcomes. It's a unique piece of property in the fact that it has the location with the two interstates and the rail. It has the size to be able to land advanced manufacturing. It's one of the largest actual contiguous sites west of Charlottesville in this entire Commonwealth of Virginia. Um, we talked about advanced manufacturing, light industrial manufacturing, um, data centers, some level of retail, some level of office in the plan that you see on page number six. There was another alternative that we laid out, uh, which actually started looking more like advanced manufacturing and the footprints that we used to see how these might fit on that campus were footprints of actual projects that my firms worked on and we continue to work on around the Commonwealth of Virginia. Uh, and the idea was to make sure that we had both a vision that we could use for marketing and we would have a plan that we could execute for infrastructure. It was extremely important to make sure that we were actually painting something that could accomplish our business goals, but then also move progress forward on, on some of the infrastructure, uh, ideas for the infrastructure projects that we're out there that I'll talk about in just a minute. The next slide, um, slide number eight, um, just reminds some of the members who did participate in that process, we used a very unique tool where we actually did have building blocks that members could actually place on the piece of property that represented the amount of acreage that would be necessary to put a variety of different types of land uses there. Uh, and on the bottom of those building blocks were actually the number of jobs and the amount of taxes that we could expect from those different colored blocks. And so it gave us a really good opportunity to remind us, it's not an infinite number of jobs we can create. We don't have an infinite number of acres to create them on. We need to both try to fit what can fit on the site and meet the business goals. And what I'll talk about in a few minutes is it has to also meet the market conditions that existed at the time, which very honestly are not a whole, they're dramatically different from the aspect of the pandemic and the, the, uh, the, uh, economic recession that we're in, but from an industry targets, I actually think we were right online and I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. So that column on the very right is where the master plan actually recommended the opportunity to create almost two million square feet, um, and create almost four million dollars in taxes, uh, for the city and over three thousand jobs. Page nine really was the, the conclusion of the plan and one of the elements of a business plan that I like, um, as opposed to some master plans, is you'll see a lot of engineering firms and architectural firms present a master plan that mostly says go spend a lot more engineering dollars and go ahead and make some things happen. Uh, I'm very proud that many of our recommendations were really to capitalize on things the city had already done or was in the process of doing, uh, demolishing the existing buildings, building the new VDOT road that was already funded, uh, leveraging the Brownfields grants the city had already secured, um, working on a Q, uh, updated ROI analysis to make sure that we could always talk to the stakeholders about how many dollars are we spending and what kind of a return we're looking for. And then the colored, um, version number five was for us to try to capitalize on a statewide program that was already underway, where the state of Virginia actually characterized four hundred and sixty pieces of property to try to determine how marketable they were. And we were going to try to swim in the direction of that study and make sure that we could move our site from what is now a tier-two site to a tier-four site, which is where the Commonwealth of Virginia wants most of the marketable sites to go. And then there was items six, seven, eight, nine, and ten that were things that we felt like we could do after we focused on items one, two, three, four, and five. The next slide just sort of talks about, you know, the reality of, of sort of where we were in, in two thousand nineteen when this plan was put together, where we really thought the first five elements were things that we could make significant progress on, um, by this time in two thousand twenty. Obviously for a number of reasons, we haven't made that progress. And I'll go into a little bit of specifics about some of those and then many of the projects that you're already aware of. But as I was getting ready to come here today, I thought if you asked me today, what would I recommend that we do if we start today? Some of my recommendations would be very similar. What we see in the marketplace and what we're talking to, uh, Virginia Economic Development Partnership about and what's going on globally from supply chain and various different industries, our recommendations would be the same. So we sort of just can talk a little bit about the specifics, but I will go into a whole lot of detail because you may have questions that both Billy and I can answer about them. But on slide eleven, yes, I would recommend that we should pursue demolishing the buildings that are out there right now. As you know, we went ahead and went out for bids. We solicited the market to see what kind of attention we would get. The contractor that was selected, we were not able to sign a contract with, but it doesn't change the market and it doesn't change the challenge of when we bring people by that site. Sometimes it's hard for customers to see their locate, their building or their business on a location because it's full of trees. In our case, it's hard for them to see their business on that location because it's full of buildings and they're not buildings we can use and buildings have to go away. And there are some great examples around the Commonwealth of Virginia where sites were driven by for years and years and years. The buildings have come down and now they're the hottest pieces of property going up and down ninety-five. We still think that's a strong recommendation. I know there's a fiscal responsibility or a fiscal element of that, but as I said before, if you hired me today, I would still make the same recommendation. And the Brownfields grant funding, as you know, I think, uh, Billy, uh, was connected to us minimizing the cost to the city about going ahead and hiring a contractor to do that. The VDOT road, so slide twelve adds to that, a project that was already going on at the time that we made these recommendations. The VDOT road was funded, it was under design. Our land plan conforms with that alignment and we actually worked with Nikki and VDOT to tweak the alignment to make sure that not only was it a, a road that could move cars, it was a road that could sell real estate. And we actually tried to put a land plan together that allowed us to go ahead and make our site more marketable once that road was constructed. And we did a similar, a utility plan to make sure that that road set us up for land base that could be marketed and served with utilities. So absolutely, I would make the recommendation, you know, that we move that project forward, you know, as fast as we can. And then on slide thirteen, it talks about some of the other things, um, that have gone on really since we made the recommendations. That BDP study that I talked about has been concluded and the four hundred and sixty sites have been vetted and ranked. The other thing they did is they actually tried to align each of those sites with what markets they would help cities attract to the piece of real estate. I thought it was innovative that BDP was thinking that way, but they were thinking the same way that we were thinking. We are in a location that can attract certain industry. Let's make sure our best asset is positioned to capitalize on growth industries. And so the next slide, um, we talked, this is actually a slide from the business plan, slide fourteen. And at the very beginning, we promised you we would consider everything and recommend the things that we thought we would have the most success with. Logistics and distribution, the food industry, light industrial, data centers, energy, um, are all strong markets, even in the recession that we're in right now and the problem with COVID. And so what we're seeing in other parts of the state right now, that the sites that are ready are getting multiple offers to purchase those sites and there's bidding wars going on for the sites that are ready because Virginia's basically running out of real estate. So again, the, the, hopefully the, the benefit of a, a good business plan that sort of stands the test of time. I've never been through a pandemic before, so I can't tell you. I have experience going through one of those. I have been through recessions before and economic development done well can succeed, uh, in a recession and I think we can. Slide fifteen just talks a little bit about some of the things that I've personally been involved with, uh, in working with Billy, um, some of those we've talked about before. The first, obviously the, uh, medical marijuana license, um, that has expired, that was not renewed by MedMen, was looking at another piece of property in the city. Um, we had talked to you guys, um, about the opportunity possibly for that to move inside this park. Um, and there are four or five different companies that are going to apparently bid for that license. And obviously we think there might be a very, very good fit, uh, for one of those if we can attract them, uh, to be inside this park and possibly actually, um, jumpstart part of this project. The next slide actually shows a graphic in the park of where that would actually fit. There's the yellow line around, um, the area that we actually talked to one of those developers about. Um, and it's something that obviously doesn't, it's not going to come to fruition for a while, uh, but it could be consistent with the master plan. It really was a target market that we weren't thinking about back eighteen months ago when we were actually putting this plan together. The other four bullets on that slide are industrial development clients that my firm is working with around the Commonwealth of Virginia that are looking for sites every day. And so I've taken the business plan with Billy's permission and I've presented it to these industrial developers, trying to see if, though, we can generate some interest and making sure that we, you know, obviously are going to use their Rolodex, their expertise to go help us market this piece of property, uh, and possibly even sort of help move things forward where they can help clear the site and track economic development. So I can answer any of the questions about those particular companies, but those are companies some of you may know. They're definitely companies I work with on a regular basis and we're doing projects with them, um, chasing major manufacturing facilities, um, major pharmaceutical facilities and major distribution centers right now. So, I thought it was helpful to maybe roll back the clock, um, to remind everybody of sort of where we were, give you my best, um, opinion of maybe the direction that we ought to be going, uh, with Stanton Crossing. Uh, and like I said before, I'm very proud that at least in my thirty-three years of doing this, the business plan that we put in place, I still think is valid as it gets compared and considered with other priorities. I know the city has, but on your economic development priority, that acreage is, is one of your golden opportunities, you know, to create that tax base for the city. So I obviously can spend as much time as, as you're interested in answering questions and get you whatever other information you need. And I know Billy's got more specific answers to some of your questions as well. But thank you for letting me be here.
Are there any questions at this time by council members?
Just to start out, the Brownsville grants, do they expire?
Yep, they do. Um, I think it'd be briefing, uh, there's a date in there that we were, as part of the agreement, we had to expend those dollars. And so knowing that the demolition was delayed, we petitioned the state for an extension. And they've given us to August twenty twenty-one to expend those dollars at this point.
And how much is, wasn't that about four hundred thousand?
Four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
And that has to be used for the demolition of the buildings?
No, that has to be used to address environmental issues, asbestos.
Which would be part of the building?
Yes, that, the environmental, um, issues have to be addressed first before you can demolish any buildings. If there's any asbestos in the paint, ceilings, flooring, that has to be removed first.
So therefore number three is related to number one. Number three being the Brownsville grants?
Yes.
Is part of, of the demolition?
Yes.
So therefore, what do we got going on the demolition?
Nothing. At this point, as Tim stated, and as you're well aware, uh, the demolition was put on hold because of the financial condition of the city as a result of the pandemic. And so right now, it's, it's sitting in limbo until council decides that.
Meanwhile, what do we pay the Timmons Group?
For what?
For their services.
For this service? Forty-eight thousand dollars to prepare the business plan.
And is that per year?
No. It's open services.
What happens, what happens if we do, don't do anything this next year? Do we pay?
Not a thing.
Tim Davy's group anything?
Matter of fact, he's been up here several times at no cost instead.
So, I guess I'm more interested in, on the, the summary pages. It takes each one of these and it says, there's dollar totals. The return on investment analysis number four is fifty to seventy thousand dollars. Is that going to be further money that the city of Stanton is, is paying to the Timmons Group for a return on investment analysis? It's, it's on your form. You're the one that shows those numbers. I'm just wondering where that dollar total comes from? And what are we looking at here?
So what we've done in the past is, is gone ahead and managed that process for other clients using sub consultants that do the fiscal ROI analysis that really vet the high level numbers, tax return, um, and jobs that we presented in the high level master plan. So it's really trying to validate the next dollars that you spend are going to be more of an investment instead of an expense, is what we're talking about. So that is.
It's still going to cost the city somewhere between fifty and seventy thousand dollars.
Understood.
And then the marketing plan is another thirty to forty thousand. Draft design guidelines and agreements, another fifteen to twenty thousand. Draft covenants and restrictions, twenty-five to thirty thousand more. These are all potential money that would be paid to the Timmons Group?
Now, that's what I said at the opening is, is there is items in the tier-four recommendation?
Yes.
That have got engineering dollars.
Yes.
That a firm like my firm would be qualified to do. Those studies are things that as an economic development consultant, I've managed for our clients in the past, but they don't necessarily be, they're not all necessarily executed by Timmons Group, for example.
They could be done by the, the group that's actually interested in purchasing the property.
That's, one of the benefits of a potential joint venture with an industrial developer is yes, you use their marketing expertise, you use their Rolodex to try to execute economic development on your property. It's one of the business strategies that some municipalities have used, yeah.
All right. On the, I guess I'm, I'm having trouble putting our hands on where we are on getting this thing rolling. If number three is tied into number one, then we don't have anything going.
The state has committed, uh, to the site about nine point two million dollars.
That would be for the VDOT road?
And for the Green Bill, Black Bill's, uh, grant. They're sitting there waiting for the city to pull the trigger on doing the demolition. And again, as I stated earlier, uh, I petitioned the state to have an extension on, on that four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So there, there's, that money's sitting there.
All right, but how much is the whole demolition job? What was the last bid you had that the, the outfit was unable to perform the job?
Uh, two point four million dollars. Two point four, two point four million dollars.
And you have four hundred thousand of that covered?
We have, I, I think, Mr. Ch.
We have, I, I think Mr. Chair can, or Mr. Robinson speaks to this. The funds, I believe, are available. But when the, when the last procurement did not come to fruition because of some technical issues involving the apparent low bidder, just I think at the point where we would have considered rebidding the project, the pandemic hit. And so there was a decision on the part of staff to tap the brakes.
Okay.
And to see what the fiscal consequences of the pandemic would be. And so that's where we are at the present time. The, the funds are available, we could rebid it, and we could award a contract, and we could move forward.
Let's go back to the demolition thing. We're talking $2.4 million, of which $400,000 is, is available through the Brownsville grant? Where's the other $2 million coming from?
We have set aside in our CIP, $2.8 million for this project.
Which is city of Stanton money?
That includes the $432,000 from the Brown.
From the Brownsville.
We have basically $2.4 million of local dollars sitting aside in the CIP.
Which we put on hold because of the COVID.
The loss of revenues as a result of the pandemic.
I understand, we're, yeah, so we're, we're basically back to step one question, are we going to bid it? Or how do we have to go about this, Mr. Rosenberg?
If council was interested in moving forward with the project at this time, I'd ask Mr. Chair to undertake a review, and we would reach a conclusion as to whether we're in a position to recommend that we move forward at the, at the time, at the present time with rebidding the project.
And if we don't move forward, do we continue to pay the Timmons group? They presented a business plan, and how much have we paid them? What has been the total expenditure to the Timmons group?
For the business plan, it was, again, I don't recall.
Well, a total.
$48,000.
That was for the business plan, but is there any other expenditures we paid to the Timmons group?
We were part of helping with the bidding process on the demolition project, trying to actually provide some technical support to make sure that we got bids from qualified demolition contractors. And again, that was one of those things that I used a relationship with a project manager to be a self consultant to Timmons group. I think that was totaled about $15,000 from the professional services to help with that bid.
Good. On this road project, the 8.9 road that I've affectionately nicknamed? We heard from our previous gentleman that if we, VDOT wants to spend money, we're going to have to let them spend the money. If it's a green project, correct? It's a green light project? Did you get that from the previous, from Nikki Mills' presentation? So VDOT's ready to build a road, but they can't build a road because we have to get these buildings demolished?
The schedule for the advertising of the project was slated for the fourth quarter of this year. Based on my conversation with VDOT representatives, that has moved about eight months or so.
So we have until mid 2021?
So that has bought the city additional time to deal with the demolition of the buildings. Currently, there is one building, which is outlined in the briefing, a three story building that sits within the proposed right of way and temporary construction area for the new road.
So let's, let's be clear, Mr. Vaughn, please. It's not that all of the buildings need to be demolished for the VDOT project to proceed. It's that one building is demolished in order for the VDOT project to proceed. Is that accurate?
That's true, but we cannot use the Brownfields grant, cannot use any of that money to demolish one building. That $432,000 was part of an agreement with the city to address all the environmental issues in all the buildings at that site, which that money has been spent first, and then they reimburse us. So we can't use it just for one building. It has to be for the entire project because this is not just about the demolition of the road. This is all about site preparation.
Correct. Is it possible that you can bid it for just the one building to be demolished, understanding that we would not be abused Brownsville money? But wouldn't that allow the road project to go ahead?
It could, but at this time with VDOT delaying the actual construction of the road, it provides the city additional opportunity to consider whether or not they're in a financial position to bid the demolition and go through with the demolition for the entire site.
I'm just questioning what would cost to eliminate one building versus 19?
The Chirp building, if you recall, were the two hotels that currently sit in. It was right next to the State Police Building.
The State Police Station, yes.
It costs the city $200, about $200,000 to do that, one building.
One building.
Yes, sir. And it's about the same size as what we're dealing with now. We did not have any additional.
I'm just thinking of that as a potential to keep the project moving and yet not expend millions and millions of dollars. But I defer to Chair.
Madam Mayor? Councilman Holmes?
Mr. Vaughn, wasn't there a possibility of a few of those buildings having some use? Or did that go by the wayside?
We're still negotiating with that entity. About two or three buildings.
So we actually could not be just storing all of them. It's a possibility that some of them might be used for other repurposed.
That's possible, yes. And there's a potential, initially in our discussions with this entity, we were going to move forward with removing the underground and above ground tines for those two or three buildings, and then giving that entity a clean bill of health. Since then, because they were still anxious, we're negotiating whether or not they were purchased as is, but we haven't gotten to that point yet. When we do, we'll bring that back to council in the close meeting.
So do you need more time? That also will give you more time as far as deciding what to do with everything over there, right?
Let me say that I fully understand the financial condition of the city right now. And it's kind of hard to be promoting the demolition buildings when people are being laid off and dealing with other financial matters. So I would say that at this point, we still have some time with VDOT moving their day line up with our extension from the Brownsville. But at some point, we'll have to decide whether we want to continue down that road or not. I would ask, and I haven't talked to Steve about that, but if council would have any concerns with staff, at least putting the bid back on the street to see what sort of prices we're dealing with. And if it's coming back that it's unreasonable, then it's, it'll be up to council and the idiot decide how to move forward. But that's not a commitment, a net commitment. It's simply say, have time to find out where we are in this economy. I mean, Nikki said that some, some of the savings and that the contractors are hungry. There's a chance that maybe the bids have come and achieved what they were before. But we don't know that because we haven't received that direction to put it back on the street. If we can at least do that, that gives us all an idea of where we are.
So Mr. Vaughn, are you asking for that direction tonight?
Yes, ma'am. No, no spending any money and not committing to any more funding or payments to Timmons, just putting the bids on the street.
This is Carolyn Dahl.
Councilwoman Dahl.
Mr. Vaughn, if we, if we just demolished one building and then VDOT built that road, wouldn't the road be destroyed by the eventual heavy trucks, et cetera, to demolish the
No, not necessarily. The entrance for the demolition is off of North Frontier Drive. It would not be off the new road, the new Spahn Road going through the site. That was the plan for the last time we put the bid on the street, that they had to use the back entrance off of North Frontier Drive.
All right, thanks.
Right. Are there any additional comments or questions? Mr. Vaughn, the CIP set aside a $2.4 million. Did you say that includes the $432,000?
If you add the $432,000 to the $2.4 of local funds, we have a total of about $2.8 million in the CIP.
Okay. All right. Is there any interest by the council to put this out for bid, to give direction? Councilman Holmes?
I think we should go ahead and put it out for bid. It's not costing us anything. And it gives us an idea of what it might cost down the road.
Correct.
Is this, that's to include?
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I'm sorry. That's to include, put out the bid for the destruction of the one building so that the VDOT program?
Yeah, demolition of all the buildings.
Demolition of all the buildings.
And while you're doing it, ask them how much it'd be for just one, to get the road built?
We could, we could do an option, option ARB, how much would it cost to remove just one building? We could include that.
As long as you're going to throw it out for, yeah, do both?
We'll probably have to do the same for the other three buildings that there's interest in, as we did last time with the bid.
So Mr. Rosenberg?
No. We, we, I think you're going to ask me what, what we need.
Do you need a, just a yes from everyone?
Yeah, I, I have, you know, I have the authority administratively to instruct staff to issue an invitation to bid, so I don't need a formal motion. I, I think if there's just a consensus among council members. Yeah, then, you know, we can move forward with that. So I, I think maybe the question to ask is whether any member of council would object to the issuance of an invitation to bid.
Are there any members of council that would object? All right.
Pretty resounding.
Mr. Rosenberg, Mr. Vaughn, we would request that you put it out for bid.
Thank you very much. Any other questions about anything in the briefing?
But put it out to bid with the stipulation, Councilwoman Claffey? You had added with the stipulation to find out how much demolition for the one building would cost the city?
We certainly can, can present alternatives for bid.
Councilman Holmes?
Mayor, I just had one question. I noticed there was a difference in one of the schematics as the other, you kind of moved away from retail. Was that just because of people's shopping habits now, or the COVID-19, or all the above?
We felt that with the, with phase one, which is about 20 some acres, 25 acres, mainly of retail, there's adequate square footage there for retail. And then also Frontier Center across the street, they have about 11 acres in phase one and another 20 acres in phase two for retail development. So we think we have adequate space allotted for retail development, development in Stanton.
Agreed.
Because I read that the push is to present it as a data center home base, trying to build up the data centers for Stanton Crossing?
Well, the data center is actually, you know, the, the storage space, it's a building, it's a very expensive building. There's a lot of servers, a lot of banking institutions, a lot of e-commerce institutions. You know, every, every of the major corporations, you know, Facebook and Microsoft are buying space and basically landbaking space right now to try to store more data. So that site requirement is that you actually have to have a high voltage power line going through your property, and you've got to be able to provide the water necessary for them to go ahead and cool the servers that are in the building. What's going on, Northern Virginia is the home of data centers in America and in the world, and the land is so expensive in Northern Virginia, a lot of data center companies are starting to spread out now. The other thing that happened was the telecom providers have sort of changed the paths because there are now undersea cables to Europe and South America that come through other parts of Virginia now instead of going through the Northern Virginia area for telecom. So we're seeing a quick pivot towards data centers going to more rural and other non-Northern Virginia locations. And since we have a Dominion power line going through our site, we are eligible or a high probability that we can get a data center to go ahead and park in that part of the site. That's why we recommend that that site sort of be held for a data. A lot of taxes, not a lot of traffic, and they're wonderful economic development tools for cities and counties.
Great, thank you. All right, so the understanding is that we do not need a formal vote. Everybody is in a consensus, 100% consensus for the city staff to move forward with putting the bids out. All right, with that, we're moving to, thank you.
Thank you, Billy.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we're moving on to item number five, the presentation on my brothers and sisters keeper initiative. This has been rescheduled for the August 27, 2020 city council meeting, so we are now on break. So we're back into our work session, and the next item on the agenda is item number six. It's a discussion concerning council meeting security. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, this item is on the agenda at the request of Vice Mayor Robertson and you, and I will defer to the two of you to begin the discussion.
And I will defer to Vice Mayor Robertson.
All right, we did have a meeting with Steve Rosenberg earlier, about a week or so ago, and at that time, we said that we would like as a council to, for a short term, this is not long term, but we would like to have council security at the meetings. We had already talked to Sheriff Robertson prior saying, simply because they, that is what they do. They actually, in a courtroom type setting or a dais type setting, they provide security for that specific kind of situation. We, we would like, I think as a council, we're suggesting that there be, that the city will cover the cost of security for the short term until situations kind of calm down in this setting. Andrea and I talked, and I think that we would like, just as a matter of situation, to have both the sheriff's office and the PD available. They can do it if they like, one and one, or have the sheriff's office do one week and the city PD do the second week. I don't care. I just would like to have security in this council. And we can go ahead and later on, if there's any discussion, we'll tell you why.
Are there any other council members that wish to have security during the council meetings? Madam Mayor? Councilwoman Darby?
I do think that, given the current, you know, intense political climate that we are in, that security is, is something that we should be concerned about. And I also know that having worked in a court setting for over 25 years, a lot of times you can stop things from getting out of hand just by having the presence of a uniformed officer in the room. And so where I know it has not been constant practice, I do think that at this time, it's something that I feel would be, would be helpful and that I would like. You know, I will, I will say that, you know, since taking office, we have had a citizen come before council and make a statement that basically we didn't do what needed to be done in his opinion, that he would show up at our homes and protest. And I take that as a threat. I think most people would. I also know that, you know, you can see people coming and going, and when you see someone come into this chamber carrying bags and such, if there's no one here to check that, I think we're all, and we're setting ourselves up, hopefully nothing ever would happen, but you just don't know. And, you know, not only for this council and staff, but for the public that's here as well, I would like to see security present. And I, and I'm, I'm in agreement that it can, you know, it doesn't matter to me how we do it, I just think that it needs to happen.
And I'm. Vice, Vice Mayor Robertson?
I make one other comment. And part of my reasoning is that, I know, I know. I make one other comment, and part of my reasoning is that, I know, I know Jim had said in his letter that he hadn't seen anything, or that, um, I've actually had, my car, it's been sideswiped twice, sitting in the alleyway of my, I, now, one of the officers did come take a report, and, um, I'm just gonna say, I don't know, why it was sideswiped twice, I don't know, I'm, we'll give the benefit of the doubt, but during the campaign, and that was never reported, and Jim, I, if you look on the CAD system, you will see where one of your officers did come to take a report, and the gentleman decided not to after talking to one of the sons, but during the campaign, I had one of my big signs up, uh, in a local business, and the plate glass, a big rock was thrown at it and cracked, or actually pretty much broke this massive plate glass. He then received a phone call and said, "If you don't take it down, the next time you step out of your building, we will run you over and kill you," quote unquote. We actually tried to get him to make the official report, we thought he was going to, and after talking to his son, he says, "No, I can't, I, I'm afraid that things will escalate and get worse." And, um, you know, this, this man is an immigrant, and a friend of mine, and he's lived in the States for 40-plus years, he's been here for eight. The other year, other, rest of that time has been up in Northern Virginia near DC, and he says, "I don't understand, in a city like that, I was never, ever threatened, but yet I come to Stanton and they break my glass and they threaten to kill me. I don't understand," he just kept on saying. So, yes, I do want security for a while until things kind of calm down.
All right, are there any other council members that would like? Councilman Holmes?
Um, I'm a little, um, uh, I've been on this council for six years, never have I felt threatened, and, and we went through the Second Amendment thing, and I had people calling me at my business, telling me they'd never eat in my place, and they, they, a lot of people stopped coming, you know, and, but I never felt threatened, like they're gonna break my place down or burn it down, I couldn't be that lucky, you know, but, uh, but, you know, it's, uh, uh, fun thing, I don't know why we weren't made aware that we had security before this week, you know, I mean, I thought, last, last meeting, that the, the people here would support the sheriff for his, uh, um, because of the, the, the security funds, I had no idea we were paying them to be here, or, or had any idea that there was even a problem from anybody, nobody, I would think that this is something everybody on council should know, if, if, if somebody's been threatened or something like that, we all should be aware of it, uh, and, um, I, I just really think that that really took me off, and then, um, you know, I think having the sheriff here, it, it, the sheriff is supposed to take care of the courthouse and, and, and serve warrants and, and subpoenas and stuff like that, but, you know, that's, it's kind of crossing the chain of command between our city chief and the sheriff, I mean, I think that if anybody, if we do need security, it should be the city, uh, uh, Stanton's police force doing it, especially since they're right downtown, right down below us, and, and it's gonna cost us less than paying the sheriff money to, to, to take care of us, I mean, you know, I, I personally do not feel threatened, and my God, I'm, you know, I, I, I say things sometimes that I'm surprised somebody doesn't threaten me, but, you know, um, I mean, it's just part of being in this, in, in this office, you know, people, people get angry, if you go by what's on Facebook and stuff like that, you, these people are very, they're, they're very, uh, forceful on Facebook, but when you see them in public, a lot of times, they are really nice to you or don't even say anything, so, I don't get to put too much into that, but, uh, you know, uh, has the sheriff's department had, uh, de-escalation and sensitivity training? Because, you know, you're dealing with people coming in here as far as, uh, citizens who might be a little bit intimidated by seeing a sheriff here in, in the brown suit, those guys are big, they're pretty intimidating looking, you know, I just, I don't know that, uh, that that's something that we really, really need at this time, and, um, and also, if, if the sheriff is having trouble, doesn't have enough help at the courthouse, why does he need to be here? I mean, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense, if he's, if he's shorthanded at the courthouse, it seems like to me that, you know, let the city police handle it, you know, I, I mean, I'm not against, I'm not against security if y'all feel like we need it, but I think it should be our city police doing it, and, uh, um, and from what I understand, it would not cost us any overtime, if not, i-if it does, it'd be very rare, and wait now, we're, we're, we're counting pennies, so we shouldn't be spending money, we don't have to.
Oh, all right, Vice Mayor Robertson?
The only thing I would, would say in response to that, Terry, is that, um, you asked whether they've had sensitivity training, and, and, uh, yes, they have, they've in that courthouse, they have, and Jim well knows, they, not only that, two-thirds or three-fourths of the members of that sheriff's department come right out of that man's department.
Right, but they've been, it's been like, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm speaking out-
That's all right, I, you know, we're just having a discussion.
No, it's just, you know, a lot of them have been out of, out of, out of the regular police office 10 years for the most part or more, you know, and, and things have changed a lot in the last year, I mean, you know, with all the things that are going on now, you need to definitely be a little bit, um, more sensitive to what's going on around you, and, uh, and I know that, I know that, you know, I, I, I went to Ophie's, uh, building bridges thing, uh, on Tuesday night after we did our sheet, and one of the things that Ophie was talking about was how well, how good of a job Jim does, as far, or, or, or Mr. Chief Williams does, uh, running the police force here, he said, there's, there's, you know, you might have a bad apple everywhere, but that's just the way it is, but he said, overall, the community is, feels very comfortable with our, our city police, and that, uh, and that, you know, and, and he's not for defunding police, I'm not for defunding police-
Never.
You know, uh-
Not as long as I'm on here.
You know, but I'm just saying that, you know, I think that we would be better off to use the forces that we already have here in the, in the office.
I, yeah, I respectfully disagree with that, but, in any case, we have two law enforcement, uh, units here, and this also is an opportunity for both of them to work together, which is, I'm correct, both of them have met and said they would work together, and I would appreciate, and I would welcome them working together. So, this council, and will we take a vote? We'll be voting yes.
Okay, well, there's no official vote, um, at least not this evening. When it comes to the, um, the financial part of it, Mr. Rosenberg, do you wanna address that issue? Or I don't know if Mr. Prayer, you would rather-
Well, uh, uh, you know, we had, we did, uh, receive last week a request from the sheriff to pay overtime to the deputies who have worked, um, uh, the two meetings in July, and it, it does appear that there are also deputies here this evening, and so the sheriff had requested, um, payment of overtime, and I, I think that there are a few issues with that, um, uh, there was only recently established an overtime budget for the sheriff's office, and it is based on the increase in the courthouse security fee that was approved by council recently. So, those additional fees have not yet been collected, that, that's the first issue. The second issue is that, um, the state code provisions which authorize the courthouse security fee require that those fees be used, uh, for the funding of courthouse security personnel, and so there, there's some question at least that, uh, there's some question at least whether the use of the funds to pay for security, not at the courthouse, but outside of the courthouse, um, is a permitted use of those fees. So, those are a couple of initial issues, one, the funds haven't been collected, two, there's a question about, uh, permissibility of the use of the funds under the state code provision, but if council wished to move forward with engagement of the sheriff's office for council meeting security, uh, we think that there would be required another budget amendment to, to identify a source of funds for that expense to be incurred by council, to be incurred by the city, and a supplemental appropriation, and we would have to have some understanding about what the arrangement is, um, you know, what, what's the, you know, what's the frequency of the service, what's the cost of the service, um, uh, you know, perhaps addressing issues related to, um, chain of command in the event of an incident, uh, in council chambers, uh, because I imagine if something occurs, the police department's gonna respond. Um, and all of that would then be distilled into, uh, an agreement, you know, a memorandum of understanding between the city and the sheriff's office. So, I think that there are some steps to take, uh, in order to get to a point where we're in a position to, to actually engage the sheriff and to compensate the deputies who provide, uh, the council meeting security services.
Are there any additional questions or comments by, uh, city council members?
Mayor Oakes. Mayor Oakes.
Councilwoman Mead.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that the bill was presented to the city for the overtime payments accrued by the sheriff's department just a week ago, and it was for the July meetings. So, could somebody walk me through how the sheriff, uh, uh, came to the understanding that he was authorized to provide security to those two meetings and that he would be paid for that?
So, it's my understanding, there were council members that wanted security, um, at this time, would the city council like to hear from Sheriff Robertson as well as Police Chief Williams? Sheriff Robertson, do you mind addressing the council?
What, what's the question?
Okay, um, the question was, had you come to the meetings in July, and also, if you could address, um, the overtime issue, um, the approximate amount and hours that we would be looking at as far as for the budget?
Mayor Oakes, could I, could I just ask my own question, please?
Uh, I was going to ask him to, um, answer yours first, and then go ahead and address the council from there.
Okay, Sheriff Robertson, my question is this, that you, that you, uh, that you attended city council meetings with staff and presented the city with a bill for that time, how did you come to understand that, uh, that attendance at city council meetings was authorized, and that, 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 uh, budget, budget amendments would be made so that you would be paid for that service?
Councilwoman Mead, I was approached, uh, individually by a couple of council members and asked me to provide security, um, the money that was, or the, now that we have an overtime budget, um, it, my understanding is gonna come out of that budget, uh, for that, for that security.
So, so you, you would normally, uh, take the authority of an individual member of council to, to come to city council meetings and expect to be paid for it?
I would, if you had asked me to come provide, uh, security for you, uh, I would do the same for you as I would any of these councilmen.
I, I would expect to, if I were an individual meeting security, expect to pay for that myself.
All right, um-
I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilman Holmes.
I'm just gonna say, like, didn't you feel like that all of us should have been informed if we were having security, because I had no idea on the organization meeting that we had security, and, uh, and I had no idea the other meetings, and I mean, you know, this is something that all council members should know, be aware of, I mean, it's, you know, you just can't unilaterally go out and hire security, you know, all of us need to know about this, and it's, it, it's just, it doesn't seem legal, I mean, it doesn't seem right, I mean, I, I don't know why, but I mean, it's just, I'm, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around it, because I've, I've been here, like I said, I've been here for six years, there's never been an incident, and I mean, there's, we, and we've had rowdy people sometimes, but, you know, just because somebody's screaming at you doesn't mean that they're, they're gonna, you know, it's, it's a, it's a life or death kind of thing, you know, and I just, I really, I'm, I'm just really taken back by this whole procedure here that's been done.
Okay, well, it's been established that we do have council members that feel, um, concerned about their safety and therefore would like to have, um, protection?
But shouldn't this be brought before council?
That's what we're doing it now.
But it's, it's already after the fact.
Well, um-
You know, I mean, it's, I mean, it's after the fact, I mean, we all, we should've been aware from the first time you felt this way.
We vote on things retroactive quite a bit, actually, but, um-
But not something like this.
Okay, well, let's talk about the finances at this point, um-
I, I don't know that this is time, I, I, I really agree with Mr. Holmes, this is so irregular.
Well, that's why we're having the conversation now.
No, 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 this is, again, it's after the fact, this was a decision that should've been made with the knowledge of the full council, not because two individual members of council approached the sheriff, and I have a problem with the fact that there is no documented, uh, evidence of any threat, that it was not reported to the police, and no action has been taken, I, I just really have a hard time understanding, and I heard, I heard Aaron at, at the podium, he was, he was excited, uh, and he did say that he might show up and demonstrate in front of people's houses, and, and that's not illegal.
No, it's not illegal, Councilwoman, um, Mead, however, um, you are sitting at home, and we are here in the chambers, and if a council member feels threatened, then they have every right to express a need for security.
Well, the threats occurred at their homes, not, not at city council chambers.
The threat was made right here in the chambers perceived by the council member, that they would come, eventually come to their home if XYZ was not performed.
So, that's where the security should be, not at city council chambers.
Well, but the, but for this council member, uh, the initial, um, perception of the threat was in the chambers, um, Sheriff Robertson?
Outrageous.
Well, that's your opinion.
It's mine.
This is Carolyn Doll, I, I have a question, I would like to know which individuals approached Sheriff Robertson?
I for one.
Well, I think I probably said something to him too, because on, um, prior to our organizational meeting, you know, there was, there was a lot of conversation, a lot of information that came to all of us, that there was gonna be people lined up outside of Ware Elementary School, you know, upset because of the election results, so, you know, I don't remember exactly what was said, but, you know, I think there were several of us that probably were concerned about that.
My next question is of Sheriff Robertson, is how much money so far have you billed the city for?
Right now, it's, it's time and a half, it, what my employees make, I, I've not billed the city, I just, I sent them an email about as far as how many hours there are, um, I can certainly go back and figure that number up and give you an email on that.
Does anybody know the, the, a rough guesstimate?
Less than $500.
And that was for what dates of service?
I believe that's through, uh- I believe that's through the last meeting.
What, which meetings?
The organizational meeting, the meeting before this, and.
The organizational meeting was during working hours, and it, that was not billed. It was strictly, it's been.
Mayor Dole.
Three meetings, I believe.
Mayor Dole, this is Mr. Rosenberg.
That's Councilwoman.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'm sorry, Mayor Oaks. My apologies.
Sorry.
The meetings in July were on July 9th and July 23rd.
So the bill is for those two?
Yeah, so it's a request for time accrued. It's not in the form of an invoice, and it identifies the three deputies who covered the meetings and the hours of each deputy. Total of 18 hours in the aggregate.
So as a follow-up question, Mr. Rosenberg, were you aware of this?
I was aware that the sheriff and his deputies were here and that they were providing security. And the item is on the agenda because as that practice continued, I had questions about it, and I thought it appropriate that it be a subject fully discussed amongst council members.
And my last, well, there's two more questions I have. If we refer to council memoranda, you will find that individual council members have no spending authority on their own. So that's more of a statement. And my final question is for Mr. Gwen. And I'd like to know, in a legal sense, who is the chief law enforcement officer for the city?
Councilmember Dole, members of council, Madam Mayor, in my view, the chief law enforcement officer, as I've expressed before in the memorandum, that I believe all of you have seen, is the chief of police in the city of Stanton. It's fairly straightforward in the Virginia law.
Thank you. Okay, because of time, we need to go ahead and move on. But in order to wrap this up, does the council want Mr. Rosenberg to look into the idea of having continued security at the meetings with our Stanton City Police as well as with the Stanton Sheriff's Department?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I would just recommend that we turn this matter over to City Manager Steve Rosenberg to arrange security for this building in the future. If he wants to have the sheriff do it one time and the police department do it one time, it makes no matter to me. But let's make sure that we have security to keep everyone comfortable at future council meetings.
Right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If we have to have security, I think it should be the city police doing our security, because it's going to cost us less money, and they're right here in the building. And, you know, I would think that they would be fine doing our security.
Okay.
And another thing is, too, is I'd much rather maybe they'd be plainclothes if they're going to be in here, so that they don't, they're not any intimidating imitation, imitate, imitating.
Intimidating?
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I.
I think, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Darby.
No, that, I just, that's my spiel.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would just say, I would ask the city manager to also please check to see what some of the other localities are doing. I do believe that, for instance, in the city of Waynesboro, Police Chief is at every council meeting in uniform, providing, you know, he's there as a presence, providing security if necessary. And I disagree with you, Terry, on that. I feel like that it is important to have them in uniform, so.
So some of that information, Councilwoman Darby, was in Chief Williams' memo. We've covered several localities and their practices, and you're correct that there are localities where security is provided on a regular basis at council meetings. I'm a little confused, and I don't want to be confused. I've heard Councilman Claffey suggest that, I think, and I don't want to put words into his mouth, but his suggestion I heard was that essentially I'd be given the discretion to make arrangements for security in council chambers.
That, and have sheriffs do one time, police do the other.
So that's where I'm looking for clarity and consensus among council members. And if we're not able to achieve that this evening, and we need to place it back on the agenda, or perhaps have some discussions in the interim, we can do that.
Is it possible for you to take a look into the financial end of it and report back to the council, whether it be through an email, or we could put it on the agenda for August 27th?
We can do that, yes.
Councilmembers?
Yeah.
Are you okay with that? Now, that would consist of, could you do a breakdown as far as looking at what it would cost to alternate for the sheriff as well as for the Stanton Police Department? I'm sorry, was that a yes?
Yes.
This is Carolyn Dole.
Yes.
There is no reason to be alternating. Our police department is our law enforcement agency for the city, and they are the experts. And if we need security, which I don't think, if we wanted to all be secure, we'd just be doing a Zoom meeting. So think about that, folks. We'd save a lot of money. We wouldn't have to be buying you dinners, and we wouldn't have to be having security.
Councilwoman.
So I am in favor of Mr. Rosenberg deciding what we need, but I am not in favor of including the sheriff, because that's money we don't need to spend. And as far as what he says is overtime so far, there was no spending authority. It was an illegal procurement by whoever, a couple city council members. So that's just, that just needs to come out of his current budget that he has, because that was not a real authorized expenditure.
Right. Well, Councilwoman Dole, to have Zoom meetings under a pandemic is understandable, but to have Zoom meetings in the future because of, it's going to make you feel safe. We have an obligation to face our citizens in person. However, if there are council members that do feel unsafe or insecure, then we do need to look at the option of having security set up in the chambers. We really need to move on, guys. So if, yes, just very quickly.
I was just going to say, you know, some people worry about their health, and they have an honest reason for not being here. I mean.
I admitted that, because of the pandemic. But for future meetings, because, you know, that way everybody will be safe. To use that as a reason, we have an obligation to meet our public face to face.
This is Carolyn.
My understanding was that this was a very short-term thing, and the pandemic is going to last for, I mean, who knows?
All right. So guys, that is a topic for another day on another agenda. Right now, we need to move on, and I am moving on. So.
Well, you brought it up.
Mr. Rosen, no, Councilwoman Dole. However, it's been addressed. Now we're moving on. So, Mr. Rosenberg, if you can please provide some information concerning the financials for the council, we would appreciate it. And if you can send that through an email, and then we can have it on the next meeting agenda.
Very well.
All right, let's move on to the next item, which is item number seven, a discussion of establishment of ad hoc advisory committee to study and report on Gypsy Hill Golf Course. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, you have with your briefing this evening a proposed resolution for your review and comment. I note, it's not on the regular meeting agenda. For your consideration, we wanted to offer you an opportunity to share your thoughts with us. The resolution, if adopted at a future date, would establish an ad hoc advisory committee with members to be appointed by council and with direct reporting to council. This is consistent with other advisory boards and commissions of the city, which are generally appointed by and report to council. The resolution provides for staffing of the committee by the Parks and Recreation Department and other city staff as necessary. In section five of the resolution, you will find detailed the specific tasks that are to be completed by the committee. We're looking to you for your input concerning those tasks, the number of members, and a deadline for submission to council of a preliminary report. Once we receive that input, we can finalize the resolution and include it on a future council regular meeting agenda for your consideration. And then after the resolution has been adopted, council's nomination committee can then solicit and review applications and make recommendations to the full council for individuals to be appointed by council to the committee. I'd be happy to answer any questions and to receive any comment from council members.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Claffey.
I believe I'm the one that started this mess. And boy, when I looked at what came out of it, it does appear to be a mess. I merely wanted a citizen advisory board to recommend improvements that we could make to make Gypsy Hill Golf Course run better, improve the number of rounds that are played, et cetera, possibly implement a youth program such as First Tee. That was the extent of what I wanted to get going. I was trying to avoid a lengthy draft that came out like this, particularly items five, where the advisory committee is supposed to review past and current programmatic and financial practices and results of the facility, conduct a comprehensive review and evaluation of the facility, complete a financial analysis of the facility, complete a facility asset analysis, complete a facility management and maintenance analysis. And that's only the first five. It goes on for 10. This is exactly what I did not want to get into. I wanted to get some concerned citizens who have some feedback that they could possibly share with Chris Tuttle, the Parks and Recs, and just have a sit down with Chris Rattle and say, Chris, maybe we could do this. Maybe we could implement a youth program. Maybe we could set up a league. Maybe we could do something simple. And let Chris Tuttle handle this, but not set up a gigantic advisory board that we need to staff and we need to, you know, worry about. I am not in favor of this at all. I wanted it to be simple. I wanted it to go to Mr. Tuttle, just so he can get some input.
Thanks, Mayor Robertson.
Yeah, I agree with Steve. I, you know, I look at this in the first part, I said, okay, I can see part of it. And you get into five, you get a citizens advisory board, they go look at that, and maybe that's the reason. I don't know. They look at that and go, forget it. I'm not getting on that committee. You know, we just, we want to make, we want to make Gypsy Hill a better place to go, an easier place to go, and just, you know, not get into this. I mean, that's just my way of thinking. Maybe, you know, I said, I agree with Steve. We can do this on a citizens-type thing and not spend whatever and get a lot of these, you know, analysis and get all these different paid consultants and all that thing. That's the problem we got now. We have any kind of thing that go wrong in city Stanton, and the next thing we want to do is we want to pay a consultant to come in here. $68,000 here, $77,000 there, $40,000 there. It all adds up. We've got some great, great people in this city and in this city staff. We don't need to be paying ridiculous numbers to consultants.
This is Carolyn Dole.
Councilwoman Dole.
This resolution, I don't see anything that's difficult about this. We have Stanton citizens who are quite capable of performing these tasks. This resolution doesn't say anything about hiring consultants. So I'm not sure what the problem is, because if you don't care about the financial part, you're missing part of the picture. So this, to me, covers all the things that need to be looked at to make the golf course successful. So I'm fine with it.
Councilman Holmes.
Yes. And how would we go about deciding who's on this board? I mean, you know, would you, like, have landscapers or somebody that has an idea of how you keep a golf course in shape? And I guess, I'm sure, people that play golf, how would you have an idea of how you would get these people together?
It's my understanding, it would be under the, it would be the discretion of Chris Tuttle, our department head for Parks and Rec.
Madam Mayor, I believe Chris Tuttle is in charge of the maintenance of the golf course as it is. I mean, there, and that's all we're doing. We're not trying to spend any additional money.
Right.
We're just trying to provide recommendations to utilize the facility a little more effectively.
Right. So, Council.
And I'm all for, and I agree with Brenda, I'm all for a diversified group. I mean, you know, let's make sure we have as many different peoples and outlooks as we can on there. I don't have a problem with that at all.
So, Councilman Claffey, were you suggesting that we eliminate number five altogether?
Altogether.
What about the other items on the resolution?
I think it needs to be redrafted so that it's reporting to Chris Tuttle, our Parks and Rec. And it's just some citizens panel to assist him, so that he's hearing some different viewpoints. That's all I'm advocating. Certainly not a long-term thing that's going to continue to come to this board.
This is Councilwoman Mead. I have a question. I guess I understood that from Mr. Claffey's remarks at the last meeting or at a previous meeting, that the committee or the advisory committee was to make recommendations about the need to spend money on new golf carts and, you know, do that sort of thing. And it seems to me that if we're expecting people to make that kind of recommendation about a financial commitment on the part of the city, that it does need to have a little more structure than just a sort of casual get-together.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Claffey.
I agree with that. And if we do get to a point where we want to spend any significant money on golf carts, et cetera, we would have to have it coming from Mr. Tuttle, and he would say, the golf course is in serious need of this, and then we could consider it. But, I mean, maybe that'd be one of the recommendations that would come up to Mr. Tuttle, but maybe Mr. Tuttle isn't even aware of that right now. And it could be anything. And I'm more concerned about the youth using it. I'm more concerned about First Tee. I'd love to see women's leagues out there playing. I'd like to see kids' leagues. I mean, there's a whole bunch of things we could do to stimulate youth that do not require major financial investment. So I'm saying, if that comes out, it comes out later, but not in the meantime.
Mr. Claffey, I just want to add that I've probably posted a couple of dozen Facebook posts on the Gypsy Hill Golf Course page talking about those very same things. I don't understand why that hasn't already been done. I mean, you know, getting a First Tee, that's a matter of getting some volunteers. Women's golf, for instance, why don't we have a Mary Ball when golf league playing at Gypsy Hill, they now have both male and female students? And it seems to me that, you know, those have all been things that could have been done. I don't understand why it is that they haven't been done.
I gotta admit.
I mean, I contributed a set of youth golf clubs so that, you know, folks could bring their kids and not have to make the investment in golf clubs. You know, that's the sort of thing that citizens can do and should be doing. Before Christmas, I posted a recommendation that, you know, folks wanted. I, before Christmas, I posted a recommendation that, you know, folks wanted to buy a round of golf as a last-minute Christmas present, they could do that, and that resulted in somebody actually going down there and buying a round of golf. You know, that's not rocket science, and I agree with you, Mr. Claffey. I just don't understand why, why it, why those things just can't get done, why they haven't been done.
Councilman Claffey.
Madam Mayor, I've only been on this city council for six weeks, and I recall last year, there was quite a turnout in the back work session chambers when there was talk about closing the golf course and using it for alternate uses. And I know it got a lot of people upset. And basically, I'm just here trying to defend the golf course, it's a great golf course, it needs more use, and that's what I'm here to try to promote. Pure and simple, without getting complicated, without making it a long-term deal. Let's just, let's just make our Gypsy Hill Golf Course work.
Councilwoman Darby.
Madam Mayor, I was just going to say that I agree with Mr. Councilman Claffey. I think that that is, our Parks and Rec Department, they do such a good job that, you know, I feel confident that, you know, give them this task, let's put together something simple for them to look at and figure out and brainstorm, and have them come back and report to us and tell us what, you know, what they think, and then we can go from there.
It's one sport, too, that you can play and not have to worry too much about COVID-19. I mean, it really is.
The rounds are up everywhere.
Okay. Also, this is Councilwoman Mead, we already have a recreation and advisory committee. Why, why, why can't we, you know, ask them to contribute their thoughts to this? Why, or, or enlist some of the golfers to join the recreation advisory committee, it's already in place.
We've already decided that we, the council, the majority of the council would like to have a citizens' task force to focus strictly on the golf course. At this time, we need to move on, so, Mr. Rosenberg, you need some direction.
Madam Mayor, no, I, I think it's clear to, it's clear to me, I just want to note that particularly with regard to item five in the resolution, we were intentionally broad in what we included, and the idea was that you all would be able to, you know, tell us what in there made sense from your perspective and what did not. So, you know, we, you know, we threw the kitchen sink at it to, so that you all could...
And that's fair enough.
It's easier to remove things than it is to add things.
Well, let me, let me just say that I did strike number five in its entirety and said the advisory committee will provide Parks and Recreation, Chris Tuttle, with recommendations for improvements to consider, period. And that's the extent of all that I'll want them to do. Keep it simple.
Madam Mayor, I would just like to say one thing, I think that in regards to the Recreation Advisory Commission, I think that this, the way I see this, is something where the specific group of folks that focus on the Gypsy Hill Golf Course would probably then, you know, definitely report to the Recreation Advisory Commission what they, what they think, what they find out, and then through that, Mr. Tuttle, as our director, would bring that information back and report it to council. That's generally how that would work, so.
So, Mr. Rosenberg, do you need any instruction?
No.
If, if I'm hearing the council right, the majority of the council would like for Mr. Tuttle to take a look at the resolution.
Well, what, what, yeah, we will prepare, we will provide, we will prepare and provide a revised resolution for council's review at the next work session.
Okay, and this will also include Mr. Tuttle's recommendation as far as the number to serve on this committee as well. All right, so we need to move on, y'all.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Before you may choose, I don't know how long Mr. Green requires for the closed meeting, and I don't know what...
It's in five minutes.
Very well.
All right. So with that, we're at item number eight, which is a closed meeting, closed meeting for consideration and discussion with legal counsel, requiring the provision of legal aid by such counsel regarding contractual-related aspects pertaining to 240 North Lewis Street, Stanton, Virginia. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Darby.
I move that council enter a closed meeting for consultation and discussion with legal counsel for necessary legal advice regarding contractual-related aspects pertaining to 240 North Lewis Street, Stanton, Virginia pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion? Our clerk of council, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
We are now in closed session. All right, I'll accept a motion to come back into open session.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Holmes.
I move that council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawful exempt public business matters were discussed, and only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Cormier, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl. Ms. Dahl.
Councilwoman Dahl.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Okay, we are now back into an open meeting, but we're also now on break. We'll be back at 7:30 for the regular meeting. As Mayor, I call this meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being broadcast over the city's cable channel and streamlined live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. I ask the clerk of council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting.
Mayor Oakes.
Here.
Ms. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Claffey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Here.
Ms. Dahl.
Here.
Ms. Mead.
Here.
All members present? Okay, all right. I ask that city manager Steve Rosenberg note the participation of city officials or colleagues or anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Madam Mayor and members of council, we are, the city official participating on the Zoom platform this evening is Maggie Reagan, Commissioner of the Revenue. All other city employees and officials participating otherwise are present in council chambers. We're also joined this evening by Beth Reader, participating on the Zoom platform, and she will be participating in the appeal from the Historic Preservation Commission when that item, when we get to that item on the agenda.
Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice provided to members of city council. In addition to limited public seating in City Hall, access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During Matters from the Public on council's agenda, towards the end of the meeting, public comments will be taken in person and by telephone. Members of the public who wish to participate in such matters by telephone at the appropriate time may call 844-854-2222, and when prompted, enter the access code 619-358 hashtag. Callers will be recognized in order. The public is reminded Matters from the Public is a time for councils simply to listen to your comments. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Detailed instructions for public participation by telephone have been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page and can be found on the agenda for this meeting and on council's website at www.c i.stanton.v a.us backslash government backslash city dash council. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting, although being conducted in person, is also being conducted by Zoom with virtual participation by certain members of city council, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to COVID-19 outbreak, which is part of the total circumstances makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with the City Council Ordinance 2020-04 Regarding Continuity of Government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.v a.us backslash C zero G zero R D two zero two zero dash zero four. All right, and with that said, I would also like to remind everyone, if you're in City Hall, please wear a mask for safety, and please keep your mask on at all times in the chambers, in the hallway, if you need to go to the restroom, please wear your mask. You may take your mask off when you're speaking in the microphone. Under Matters from the Public, if you would like, we do offer some sanitizer that's in sheet form, if you care to wipe the microphone off. So we just want everybody to be safe. Also, I ask the city council members, according to parliamentary procedure, if you would like to speak, please address the mayor, and I will recognize you to speak. With that, if you would like, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is as unified by the United States of America, the free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is an invocation moment of silence, and that will be given by Councilwoman Dahl.
Yes, I would like to offer this prayer. Oh God, thank you for not flooding Stanton today. Please bless our city employees for their outstanding work during the flooding on Saturday and the cleanup afterwards. Also, I ask you to bless the citizens who volunteered their labor to help others with their cleanup, and those who have donated to funds that provide aid. God, as we remembered yesterday, the white nationalist violence in Charlottesville, please help all those who have hardened their hearts and who no longer value truth and integrity to join the better way with equality, peace, and understanding, as you let judgment run down as waters and righteousness as a mighty stream. I pray these things in her name, amen.
All right. Next is the mayor's report. As Councilwoman Dahl indicated, we did battle a flood, in fact, we battled a mini-flood last night, so we battled two, and there's the possibility of a third flood on Saturday. The city's been working very hard on water restoration, and we continue to work hard to mitigate any further damages. Now, Mr. Rosenberg will get into this further under Matters from the city manager, but the city's been, been out there just tires, being very diligent and tirelessly working towards cleaning the streets, the sidewalks, clearing the drainage, trying to help citizens out when it comes to the devastation that they have undergone because of this flood. The city has opened the landfill, which we did on Sunday. We offered additional trash pickup for heavy trash related to the flood. We closed off Lewis Street to give room for tear-out and repairs of a devastated house on Lewis Street. We offered a sandbag pickup several times before. We've extended free parking, we've worked on a very comprehensive assessment report to be given to the governor's office for possible VDEM and FEMA funding. Again, the city manager will get into this further when he discusses the state of flooding. We've worked hand-in-hand with Greg Beam with the SDDA, and I cannot say enough about Greg Beam. I don't think he has slept since Saturday, he has just been phenomenal. He has been a great source for our citizens to turn to for guidance on where to go for help. And on behalf of the city council, I would like it put in the record that we thank Greg Beam, and we cannot say enough about the dedication that he has shown, not just to downtown, but to the city as a whole. We've worked with citizens as far as their ideas, because the opening up of the landfill along with the heavy trash pickup, those ideas came from the citizens, so please, keep your ideas coming in, we are listening, and we are taking notice. Blocking off Lewis Street, that came from a citizen, so your ideas are being heard by City Hall. The citizens, you guys have been absolutely amazing. We've come together as one, we have no differences right now, just one common denominator, and that is to restore our city and to look out for the well-being of our citizens. Our neighbors in Waynesboro, as well as Augusta County, reached out to me immediately to offer their help. Other localities extended their prayers and their concerns towards the city with what we've been going through. Their citizens have shown up in full force to help, and this is one reason why I am so incredibly proud to say that I live in the Shenandoah Valley, because there are no borders in the Shenandoah Valley, it is open. Waynesboro, Stanton, Augusta County, when it comes to a storm that we had here in Stanton Saturday, we all come together as one known as the Shenandoah Valley. It's just very heartwarming. We've received many donations, whether it be money, water, Gatorade, snacks, and out in the hallway earlier, we had 300 cases, 3,600 bottles, which actually they're in boxes, of Flow Water to come in from Weir's Cave, from the Flow Company. We cannot thank them enough. We've had donuts, I mean, we've had all sorts of snacks, I mean, the list goes on and on. Again, we cannot thank you enough. There are opportunities out there for businesses as well as for our homeowners. The Community Foundation has a program set up, the Stanton Creative Community Fund, they also have a GoFundMe set up, and there's also the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission, you can reach out to Rebecca Joyce for guidance if you need guidance on financial help with the devastation. I will say, in Stanton, we have been very blessed. We did lose a lot as far as property, but property and contents can be replaced, people cannot. We did not lose one single soul, and for that, I am most grateful. I've said it before, and I'm going to say it again, we are like a family here in Stanton. We may fight like brothers and sisters, but at the end of the day, if you mess with the family, we come together and we bond together as one. So look out, Mother Nature, we are Stanton strong. All right. With that, are there any additional items by members of council?
I mean...
It's all right, council, Councilman Holmes, it's all right.
Sorry. I went to building bridges with Ophi Kair on Tuesday night after we did our shoot-up on the, for masks, for wearing masks up on Sears Hill, and they had a great turnout, and, you know, and, and basically, they have a lot of prayers and expressed for what's happening in town, and Ophi is, you know, definitely trying his best to keep the town unified, and it was just a really nice event. There were a lot of people there, and it's just, it's just nice to get out and see this turnout in our town.
All right, thank you. Are there any additional comments by council members? Councilwoman Darby.
Madam Mayor, I would just like to personally express my gratitude to the Stanton Fire Rescue Department, along with the police, the city sheriffs, public works, public rec department. I was out there Saturday night when this flash flood hit downtown, and... I was out there Saturday night when this flash flood hit downtown, and I am just very thankful to all of you, and we are so blessed for everything that you do to keep us safe. So thank you very much. I would also agree that the SDA and SCCF and all the volunteers, they've just been doing a great job, and so I just can't not acknowledge that. One other thing, well, two other things real quick. We did, since the last council meeting, did have a new business open here in Stanton, and so Mayor Oaks and myself were able to attend the ribbon cutting at the Salon Platinum Establishment next to Martin's, and so I'm excited for a business to open in the city during a pandemic. I think that's a great thing. And then the only other thing, two things. I was fortunate enough to have a tour of our Stanton High School, and it's just fabulous. Can't wait. Thanks to Garrett Smith Superintendent for taking me through there. Attended a school board meeting Monday night. Let's keep the school system in our thoughts and prayers. They're dealing with a lot, too. And yesterday, I was here at City Hall with Vice Mayor, and we had the opportunity to meet, greet the BFW Commander in Chief here, so it was really nice.
All right. Are there any additional comments by council members?
I, yeah.
Vice Mayor.
I just want to put my two cents in as well and kind of repeat what Amy said. Had the opportunity, we were out, Amy and I were out until 2:30 on that Saturday night, and I cannot express the gratitude for our police department, our sheriff's department, our fire department. The Public Works performed miracles. I got up early the next morning with a few hours sleep and went out, and I was amazed at how much and how quickly they had cleaned up some of the streets from the gravel, and I know in my place where I have an alley behind me off of Allegheny, the gravel, most of it that I put up there last year, ended up on Allegheny, made a left-hand turn, and then ended up now on the Thorn Rose. So all of that was cleaned up the very next morning. I just want to express my gratitude to all of those departments, and then to say how proud I am to be a Stantonian, the people coming together, working together, showing up as people were cleaning up down here, down near the Bistro and Wharf, bringing in hot, hot meals, hot food to help and feed the people that were trying to clean up, just showing up in their boots and said, how can I help? The people of Stanton have stepped up to the plate, and I am so very proud of them, and like I said, just of our city staff. I just can't tell you how, how unbelievably proud I am. So thank y'all. I see Chief Garber out there. Thank you, you're fine, and I made a trip to Stanton Augusta Rescue and just personally thanked them for everything that they did, because we obviously, we are out, and there was lots of calls being, being handled, so thank you.
Any further comments by council members? Okay. I would also like to note that Steve Rosenberg, our city manager, you will be given an update under item D, correct? Okay, I stand corrected. He'll be giving an update under item D.
I think, although I think you've covered a lot of the territory that I was planning to cover.
It's worth repeating, and I too would like to say thank you to our first responders and our Public Works. You were truly the city's lifeline when we needed you the most in our darkest hour, so thank you so much. And I'd like to take a moment to recognize one of our school board members, Bob Boyle. Thank you for attending. So, thank you. All right. The next item is the approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of July 23, 2020.
Mayor Doe. I mean, God, I'm sorry.
It's fine. You'll get used to it. Councilman Holmes.
I'm sorry. I'm, I move to approve the work section agenda and the regular meeting agenda as presented.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, if we could just clarify, I believe Councilman Holmes made a motion concerning agendas and what we're.
Did you do that again?
What we're after here is a motion concerning minutes.
Try it again.
All right. I move that the works, the work section and regular meeting agenda is approved as.
Minutes.
Minutes. Sorry, guys.
July 23. From July 23, 2020.
Yeah, July 23. That's right.
So the motion on the floor is to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of July 23, 2020. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Councilman Clappy is second. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor Oaks, this is Councilwoman Mead.
Councilwoman Mead.
I'd like to ask that at line 429 of the minutes, of the draft minutes of the meeting, that the quote from the city council's June 12 statement on racial justice be included. Since we actually made that quote or spoke that quote twice, I think it's important that it be included in the minutes, and I'd be happy to provide that information to Ms. Cormier, or I would be happy to state that right now.
If you wouldn't mind stating it, Councilwoman Mead.
I'm happy to. While we do not, and this is at line 429, while we do not have all the answers right at this moment, we will immediately consider specific initiatives that will help the city ensure fair and equitable treatment of all Stanton residents and visitors, including in interactions with law enforcement.
Councilman Holmes, would you care to amend your motion?
I guess I'll try. Let's see here.
What line was that again? Councilwoman Mead.
Line 429.
429.
I move to approve the work agenda and regular meeting of July 23 with the inclusion of line 20.
429.
429, as stated.
For July 23, 2020.
I did.
For the, for the minutes, for the minutes.
Minutes. I'm sorry.
All right. That's fine. All right. So we have an amended motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I second.
All right. Councilwoman Darby has second. Is there any further discussion? All right. Ms. Cormier, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Clappy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
The amended motion carries.
Thank you. All right. So the next item on the agenda is the Report of Nominations Committee in consideration of nominations of council liaisons to boards and commissions and to committees to the Virginia Municipal League. Councilman Clappy.
Madam Mayor, the nominations committee met Thursday afternoon, July 30 in the caucus room. Committee members Amy Darby, Mark Robertson, and myself were joined by city manager Steve Rosenberg, who's big help getting us organized. The boards and commissions listed on the city website list 28 separate groups. Last year, only 12 were assigned council liaisons. 16 other boards, which are mostly regional organizations or judicial-appointed boards, do not need a council liaison. But Mr. Rosenberg did point out that three additional advisory boards could be assigned council liaisons, and they were the Landscape Advisory Board, the Recreation Advisory Commission, and the Library Board. So we have assigned those. I will present this as a committee report, so I will make it in the form of a motion that I move that we approve the nominations committee report, which consists of Agriculture and Forest Advisory Committee will be Vice Mayor Robertson, Cable Television Commission will be Mayor Oaks, Central Shenandoah Planning Commission will be Councilwoman Doe, the Economic Development Authority will be Councilman Clappy, the Historic Preservation Commission will be Councilman Holmes, Landscape Advisory Board will be Vice Mayor Robertson, the Lewis Creek Watershed Advisory Committee will be Councilwoman Mead, the Library Advisory Board will be Councilman Clappy, the nominations committee we just said, the Planning Commission will be Councilwoman Darby, Recreation Advisory Commission will be Councilwoman Darby, Redevelopment and Housing Authority will be Councilwoman Mead, Tourism Advisory Board will be Councilman Holmes, the Youth Commission will be Vice Mayor Robertson, the Stanton Augusta Waynesboro, what is MPO, Steve? Metro.
Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Planning Organization is, will continue to be served by Councilwoman Doe, who had the prior appointment. Stanton Development, Development Association, Downtown Development Association will be Mayor Oaks, Stanton School Board will be Councilwoman Darby, the Virginia First City, which is a prior appointment, will be Councilwoman Mead, and then the six committees on the Virginia Municipal League will be Community and Economic Development by Councilwoman Doe, Environmental Quality by Vice Mayor Robertson, Finance by Councilman Clappy, General Law by Mayor Oaks, Human Development and Education Councilwoman Darby, and Transportation Councilman Holmes.
Okay. Since this motion came from a committee, it does not need a second. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Holmes.
If Ms. Mead would consider taking my place on the Virginia Municipal League Transportation Board, I would like to cede that to her, as I'm really pretty busy these days, and it would be kind of nice if, if y'all didn't have a problem with that.
The Virginia Municipal League will only allow you to serve on one committee, so if you want to switch with Councilwoman Mead.
Mayor Oaks, this is Councilwoman Mead. I'm not currently serving on.
You are not serving on one.
No, she was not, because I believe she was the appointment to the Virginia First Cities.
You were the Virginia First Cities. Okay.
But if she is willing, we could definitely arrange this.
Are you willing?
I'm certainly happy to do that.
All right.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to amend that portion of your motion?
So in the Virginia Municipal League, the final line of transportation that will now become Councilwoman Mead.
All right. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Ms. Cormier, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Clappy.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
The amended motion carries.
All right. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Consideration of Refund of Bank Franchise Tax to Branch Banking and Trust Company and Related Ordinants. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor and members of council, Maggie Reagan, the Commissioner of the Revenue, will present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Madam Mayor, members of council, you have before you an ordinance authorizing the city, council to direct a refund of $29,355 of bank franchise tax previously paid to the city by BBNT, now operating as Truist Bank. For background information, as I mentioned to you earlier, this has been directed by the Department of Taxation after consideration of amendments and appeals on behalf of the bank, and each locality has been given an amount and requested for those funds to be refunded as taxes overpaid. This is due to no error on the part of the city. This was an amendment, an appeal of amendment for information that was erroneously submitted by the bank when they originally paid the taxes, and there will be no interest accrued on this, and if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any further questions from Ms. Reagan concerning this matter? Ms. Reagan, I have a question.
Yes.
Do you foresee this being an issue again in the future?
I have asked that question of the Department of Taxation specifically. Due to the fact that it took so long for this to get through the process from 2012 until now, I specifically directed a question to the Department of Taxation as to whether or not they had received any subsequent appeals by the same organization for ensuing years and whether or not they expected to receive such, and I was assured that there were no appeals in the process right now and that they did not expect any further appeals from this organization.
Okay. Hopefully not. All right.
I certainly hope so as well.
Yeah. Any additional comments? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion concerning item number B.
Mayor Oaks.
Councilman Holmes.
I move the council adopt the ordinance authorizing and directing the treasure of the city of Stanton to refund a tolls, assess the assessment of bank franchise taxes in the amount of $29,355 to Truist Bank, the successor in interest to banking BBNT Company.
So we have a motion by Councilman Holmes. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion? All right. Ms. Cormier, I'm going to get that right.
Cormier.
Cormier. Please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Clappy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. The next item.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Reagan. So, all right. The next item is item number C, An Appeal of Historic Preservation Commission Denial of a Certificate of Appropriateness for 208 Fayette Street Newtown Historic District. Side addition. And Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor and members of council, Rodney Rhodes, the city's senior planner, will present this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. Under the city code, an appeal may be taken to city council to challenge a decision of the commission. City council has the prerogative to reverse or affirm the commission's decision in whole or in parts, essentially having the same powers of the commission. Tonight before you is an appeal by Kim and Bill Woodwell regarding the commission's denial of a certificate of appropriateness for the construction of addition at 208 Fayette Street, which was denied on July 28, 2020. I'll give a little background on this application, a little timeline on the commission's actions, and then hand it over to Frank Strassler of the Historic Stanton Foundation to go over the details of the proposal and how it relates to the guidelines. This application actually came before the commission on three separate occasions with various modifications. The original application went to the commission in May of 2020 regarding this house. This was a three-story addition on the north side. The commission noted that the proposed addition deviated significantly from the guidelines. In particular, they said it was too close to the front edge of the house, competed with the massing of the current house. It is thrown off the symmetry, obscuring the entire north face of the building. Therefore, the applicant was willing to table this request until the June meeting to come back with additional changes, and which the applicant provided prior to the June meeting. And the revised plan set the house, the proposed addition, back from the front of the house several feet. The height of the addition had been reduced slightly, so it would not obscure the bracket and corners of the original roof, and the addition was also reduced in width and depth. The applicants also provided alternative designs utilizing a hyphen to connect and physically and visually separate the addition from existing structure, which was a suggestion at the May meeting by several of the commission members. The commission still took issue with the massing and height of the addition. The commissioners noted their preference for a two-story addition. The applicants noted that that would not work for their intended purpose with this house, but they were willing to come back at the July meeting with additional details for a three-story addition, which they did. And at the July 28, 2020, the applicants noted that the focus of the most recent changes was to soften and to reduce the massing of the addition. They also reminded the commissioners that this is a unique property. It's much larger than most residential properties in downtown historic districts, and the proposed addition would be at least 80 feet from both Fayette and Federal Streets. However, at the. Um, however, at the conclusion of that meeting, the commission, on a four-to-one vote, was not unanimous, um, acted to deny the request for certi- certificate appropriateness. And, uh, at this time, I will hand it off to Frank Strassler, who's an expert in historic preservation with Historic Stanton Foundation. And as part of the established process, he reviews and submits a written briefing and a recommendation on all applications that go to the commission. So in this case, he did three separate reviews for the mission and one for council tonight. And I'll hand it over to him at this point to go over the details of the proposal.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Strassler.
Good evening, members of council. Um, I've provided you a, a brief, um, to outline the reviews that were done for, uh, for this, uh, for 208 Fayette Street. And I hope you've had a chance to review the brief and to review, uh, the, the various, the, all of the reviews done for the project. The reviews provide an architectural description, existing conditions, proposed changes, and an outline of the guidelines applicable to the project. The reviews are intended to help the commission members establish a finding of fact, uh, that's relevant to the adapted zoning, um, that establishes a basis of information, including a location in historic district, the view of features from a public street, and establishes elements relating to the historic character of the property. Uh, the applicable historic district guidelines, as adopted by the city of Stanton, were outlined for each meeting. So in further review of this, of the discussion, um, the reviews followed mainly Section 7 of the Guidelines for Additions. Um, also used were reviews, um, from sec- or, or guidelines in references to the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and the Secretary of Interior Guidelines for Rehabilitation. Both are used as a basis for local guidelines and are listed in the Stanton Zoning Code. The Guidelines for Additions. Sure you've read all this, and I'm gonna read some highlights. Um, in the general description for additions, one of the key factors, the addition should be designed so that, so that significant materials, features, and forms of the original building are maintained. One, attempt to locate the addition on the rear elevation. But I think the key element of this guideline is so that it is minimally visible from the street. Number three, limit the size of the addition so that it does not visually overpower the existing building, and it should be subordinate to the historic structure. And a number six, it should be differentiated from the old while being compatible with its massing, form, scale, directional expression, roof forms and materials, foundation, fenestration, and materials. When we go to the Secretary of Interior Standards, to the basis for all the guidelines, uh, on number one, it stresses, given a new use, a, a property will be used as was historically, or given a new use that requires minimal change to its distinctive features or distinctive materials, features, spaces, and spatial relationships. And number two, the historic character of a property will be retained and preserved. The removal of distinctive materials or alterations of features, spaces, and spatial relationships that characterize property will be avoided. Number five, distinctive materials, features, finishes, and construction techniques or examples of craftsmanship that characterize a property will be preserved. Key are number nine and 10. Related new construction will not destroy historic materials, features, and spatial relationships that characterize the property, and will be compatible with the historic materials, features, size, scale, and proportion, massing, to protect the integrity of the property and its environment. And on 10, the essential form and integrity of the historic property and its environment would be unimpaired. And so I, I had provided some additional reading on the introduction to rehabilitation, and there were various background materials in all of the reviews. Um, and Historic Stanton Foundation, as an advisor to the commission and to council, we recommend the council uphold the decision reached by the Preservation Commission. The commission reviewed the existing conditions. It considered the proposed changes in relationship to the adopted guidelines in reaching their decision. May I answer any questions you may have?
Are there any questions for Frank Strassler by the council? All right, thank you, Mr. Strassler. Um, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mayor Oaks. I, I failed to mention that the applicants, Kim and Bill Woodwell, are here in attendance and would like to address.
Is the council, okay? Yeah. Please, if you would like to address the council, feel free.
Hi, I'm just gonna hop in here real quickly. Um, I'm Kim Woodwell, and, um, I just wanna take a moment to thank the members of the city council and the staff for your work and, um, your time that you spent on our, um, on everything in Stanton. Um, certainly, um, given the, uh, light of the circumstance, rapid response that you had to do with the flooding, um, really to see the tremendous outpouring of support for these folks that have lost, really suffered loss in this community, has really reaffirmed the decision that Bill and I made last year to make Stanton our new home. So I just wanna thank you. And as you guys have mentioned much of that already, the great work that's been happening.
Great. Um, thank you for giving us this chance, um, to talk tonight. Um, and if you don't mind, I took off my mask for this. Um, all of you have seen the appeal letter we prepared for your packet, and I just wanna give you a quick overview of, of why we're here tonight. We are the owners, as has been stated, at, uh, 208 Fayette. We purchased this home last fall, uh, after deciding to move to your beautiful city. And we're gonna live there with Kim's mother, Laura, and our daughter, Josie. We also have a son, Dean, who's in college in the Midwest. Uh, Laura is, uh, very happily moved into the house already. Uh, Kim and Josie and I will be moving to Stanton later this year. And our goal is to just, to make 208 Fayette a home for our family for many years to come. For 25 years, we've lived in an 1830 farmhouse. Uh, we restored with the help of Winchester-based architects, Reader and Swartz. And Beth Reader and Chuck Swartz are on the Zoom today with us because we have consulted with them about the renovations we're hoping to make at 208 Fayette. And I think it's important to note that their firm has won numerous awards for its historic preservation work across Virginia and beyond. And if there's one message we wanna make sure you hear from us tonight, it's that we love and we respect the history of this home at 208 Fayette and the surrounding Newtown neighborhood. And that's why we bought the house. That's why we're making every effort to design these renovations in a way that protects the historic character of this unique property. And we fully support the mission and, and the purpose of both the Stanton Historic Preservation Commission and the Historic Stanton Foundation. And in fact, we feel that our constructive conversations with the commission over three monthly meetings have improved the proposal that's before you today. We feel we've worked in good faith to try and respond to the commission's comments and concerns. But in the end, we feel that their decision to vote down our proposal goes against the Stanton Historic Guidelines, against precedent, and against the best interests of the city of Stanton. From the start, we considered many options, approaches, for retaining the historic character of the house at 208 Fayette while making it work for our family's needs. One of those needs is accessibility for Kim's mother. We're hoping to create an accessible garden-level apartment for Laura. This would replace the two small, dark basement units that are currently there and that were rented out until very recently. On the upper floors, we wanna create space for a bright, family-friendly kitchen space. Now the house has a smart, uh, small, dark galley kitchen with no seating. We're also hoping to add a mudroom, laundry room, extra bedroom, so we can use one of the small upstairs rooms for an office. And the end result of all this, the reason I say all that is, the end result of all this is a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath home with an office, an attic, kitchen, and living space. Um, and in this time of COVID, when we're all living and working 24/7 in our homes, uh, we feel our plans are very recent. As we started bouncing around ideas for these renovations, we initially thought about building on the back of the house. But that would have meant tearing down its historic 100-year-old back porch, which is a prominent feature of the home and is critical to entry and exit from off-street parking. So in the end, we decided to explore adding to the side. And I know some of you have come to the property, and I thank you for that. And I think if you are standing there, it just makes sense to build on the north of the house. And the reason is because the uniqueness of this lot and the large amount of space that's available on that side to do this. You can see this illustrated in our letter that you have tonight. While most of the lots on that block of Fayette are narrow, east-west axis, side-to-side, 208 Fayette, we have the luxury of a, a north face, north-facing side garden, uh, with off-street parking, uh, with ample space. And I think somebody already said, I mean, that what, what we're proposing would be more than 80 feet from Fayette and Federal Street, which gives you an idea of the size of the lot. As you can see in our letter, we made a number of changes to our proposal in the course of our conversations with the commission. After the first meeting in May, we worked with the architects to reduce the width, the height, setbacks. Then after a good discussion in June, we made some important design changes to address the overall massing of the addition. And I'm learning a lot in these last few months, and now I know that massing refers to the perception of a building's size and scale. In the end, we feel we made every effort to try to respond to the commission's comments and suggestions while making sure our proposal still works for our family's needs. And tonight, I, I wanna briefly go through three reasons why we hope you will consider approving this proposal. We believe it should be approved based on the historic guidelines that have been mentioned, based on precedent, and based on the interests of the city. First, on the guidelines. We believe the commission's denial is founded on a subjective reading of the Stanton Historic District Design Guidelines for Additions. We describe in our letter how we believe our proposal actually complies with those guidelines. And we'd be happy to answer any questions you have about that. But by the guidelines alone, we feel our proposal should have been approved, and especially with the changes we made during our conversations with the commission. The second reason why we feel you should consider approving our proposal is precedent. We feel there is obvious precedent for approving a project like the one we proposed, and you don't have to go very far to find it. Our home at 208 Fayette was originally one of two wings of the Stanton Female Seminary. Two doors down is the sister house that formed the other wing of the school. And in 2006, the Historic Preservation Commission approved a three-story addition at 214 Fayette Street, our sister house. And that addition added 400 square feet per floor to the original structure of that house. By comparison, the addition we are proposing adds 371 square feet per floor at 208 Fayette. We remarked to the commission members, we could think of no better precedent for the addition we are proposing at 208 Fayette than the commission's approval of a similar-sized addition to its sister property just two doors away. And so on the basis of precedent as well, we believe our proposal should have been approved. The third and final reason why we believe the city should consider our approval, our, our, our proposal is because of the message it sends to residents and businesses when the default position of the city and its commissions is to look for reasons to deny proposals such as this. When you have a resident or a family wishing to invest in their home and improve it for current uses while making every effort to protect the historic character of that home, we believe the default position for this city and for any city should be to look for ways to support them to make that happen. As we pointed out to the commission, our house at 208 Fayette was not originally to be, uh, built to be a house. It was one of three structures that made up the Female Seminary. It was built as a school. And in the decades after it moved into private hands, the property first included multiple rental units and then was adapted to a single-family home with the two small, dark apartments below. So with our proposal, we're simply asking for approval to do what the previous owners of the sister house, two doors down, did in 2006. Our goal is to give this former institutional school building the function that our family and other families would want in a forever home. And we wanna do this with minimal changes to the house's existing and distinctive features. And we wanna do it as diligently, as respectfully, and as tastefully as possible. So we thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to any questions you have.
Does council members have any questions?
I'd just like to make a statement.
Councilman Holmes.
Um, you, um, I want you to understand with the Historic Stanton, uh, uh, committee that, uh, they're not looking for reasons to deny you. They're, they have to go by the guidelines that they're given. And, and that's why we're here. That's why you can come to us and, and, and get a variance. But I mean, they're doing what they're supposed to do. And I, and I didn't mean, I don't want you to think that they were trying to find reasons to turn you down, because that's not the case. No, I understand, I understand, thanks, yes.
All right, any further questions?
Yes, this is Carolyn Dahl.
Councilman Dahl.
Uh, first, welcome to Stanton.
Thank you very much.
Uh, and I had a question about the artist, uh, rendering of how it's gonna look. Is it, is it gonna be brick just on the first floor? And then what's that other material? I was just curious.
Um, I believe the, um, it will go, the flat rendering that we, that we turned into the packet is, does have brick on the first floor to match the brick on the house. So it would be stained like the brick on the house. And then the, um, the, it will be, I believe, uh, the, the flat cement board that is allowed in the historic district, I believe that that's, is that right, what it's called? We're trying.
Uh, we, we have our architects.
We have our, oh, Chuck and Beth on the phone?
Oh. Maybe not.
I had another meeting, and they were trying to hop between meetings, but.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, yes. So the, the base level, um, is brick, and the upper two floors are, uh, especially from what you see from the fr- front of the, uh, from Fayette Street, is essentially wood trim and windows. And the, the intention in, um, in historic architecture, there are very few sort of, uh, buildings that have more windows than walls. And the exception to that is, uh, when porches get infilled. So the intention is to, um, actually, uh, uh, make this, uh, feel as though it was an infilled porch. So what you're primarily seeing is, uh, is, is windows, glass, and wood. And then the back half of the project has lapped siding on it.
Okay, thank you. And as someone who was almost a native Stantonian, and you all are come-hers, it's amazing to me. Uh, growing up here, everyone called it Fayette Street with the accent on the first syllable. And by golly, you all are pronouncing it correctly.
Thank you very much.
Are there any additional questions or comments?
Am I?
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Am I correct, uh, reading through the materials, y'all have made basically three, uh, changes that were requested by Stanton Historic Preservation? Or, that made three changes? You've been there three times and?
We've been there three times, and between the first and second meeting, uh, we started in May, and, uh, they tabled it, and we came back with setbacks, uh, shrunk the, the width and the depth a little bit, and then brought it down in height a little bit.
And even added some, um, some different roofing trim details to make the, um, just to sort of do greater overhang. They called them rafter tails. Um, we added some, we sort of did some different enhancement around the trim details to break up a little bit of the size and the massing on the side.
Okay. And I will also tell you, your mother, who I met today, is wonderful. I like that woman. Yes, she is.
Councilman Claffey.
Madam Mayor, I'll say toward your, well, toward your neighborhood, and, um, look at it, and you've done a beautiful job with this piece of property. And there really is no choice for an addition. You cannot go to the south side. The east and the west side are loaded with porches, which are beautiful. The windows on the north side do not match the windows on the front of the house anyway. And I, uh, after looking at it and talking to the neighbors, it just seems to me that this is what we wanna do in Stanton. We want to encourage growth. We want somebody that's going to add value to a house to be able to do so. And we wanna. And we want to thank you for coming to Stanton to do so. Welcome.
Any additional comments or questions? All right, I would like to reiterate what Councilwoman Dole stated. Welcome to Stanton. Happy to have you here. I do have a question for Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Rhodes, you said that it was a four-to-one vote. What was the reason behind the one vote?
That member thought that the applicant had made a persuasive argument for the proposal meeting the guidelines.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, any additional comments? Otherwise, we have choices, three different choices. You can make a motion to affirm the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission, deny on the request for the certificate of appropriateness. You can make a motion to reverse the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission, approve the certificate of appropriateness. Or you can move that council remand the matter back to the Historic Preservation Commission to consider new information presented at the city council meeting.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Actually, Mr. Claffey.
Go ahead, Councilman Claffey.
Madam Mayor, I move that council reverse the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission and approve the certificate of appropriateness as requested by the applicant permitting the addition as presented.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to reverse the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission, and we have a second further discussion.
Mayor Oaks, this is Councilwoman Mead.
Councilwoman Mead.
I agree that from the packet and materials, and I did visit the house as well, that the Woodwells have made every effort to accommodate the suggestions of the Historic Preservation Commission throughout the process. As I said, I visited the home, and I think the addition can be accomplished in a way that will enhance the value of the house and still retain the architectural elements that are important to historic preservation. I think the porch at the rear of the home is beautiful and should be preserved, and I will vote to approve the Woodwells' request. I have only one reservation. I think it's an important one. I'm concerned that some citizens who live in historic, in our historic districts will see this as a signal that appeals to city council with its focus on reducing regulations might become the easy route to getting approval for inappropriate modifications to structures in our historic districts. The districts are what differentiate Stanton from many cities in the Commonwealth who have not made architectural preservation a priority. Our exceptional architecture brings millions of dollars of tourism and investment to the city. And I'd hate to see Stanton's status as a historic city descend into average. So that's all I have to say about that.
Hey, Councilwoman Mead, your concerns have been duly noted. Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Cormier, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
The next item on the agenda is item number D, Consideration of Resolution consenting to and confirming declaration of local emergency beginning August 8, 2020. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Monday, I made a declaration of local emergency as authorized under the Code of Virginia in response to the flood event on Saturday, August 8. And with that declaration, it gives the city authority to undertake measures in response to the flood event. And as provided under state law, after such a declaration is made by the chief administrative officer, it requires confirmation by the governing body, in this case, city council. You have before you, for your consideration there, for a draft resolution that provides for consent to and confirmation of my declaration. I'm pleased to answer any questions you have. And after you've considered the resolution, I would like to provide an update to you concerning the city's response to the flood event.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Rosenberg? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Darby.
I move to adopt the resolution consenting to and confirming the declaration of a local emergency beginning August 8, 2020 in the city of Stanton.
So we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Darby. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to second that.
All right, we have a second by Councilman Claffey. Any further discussion? Ms. Cormier, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, the next, you were going to give us an update.
Sure, if I may, I'd take just a few minutes to cover some material with you all. I think some of this has already been addressed by Mayor Oaks and members of council. But certainly, we all saw for ourselves the exceptional public safety response overnight on Saturday, on Sunday, and again last evening. And I direct council members' attention again to Lieutenant Furbus' memorandum concerning the police response in particular. It was quite a narrative, and if you haven't had the chance to read that, I would encourage you to do so. We have also seen, as has been noted, a tremendous volunteer effort in the days since Saturday night. Literally, hundreds of individuals have responded over the course of the last several days. As I emailed you all earlier today, and as I've shared with the, our local delegation to the General Assembly as well with Congressman Ben Klein, I provided to you the initial damage assessment of the city, which was completed and submitted yesterday to the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. In that assessment, we report damage amounts totaling approximately $3.1 million. There was $1.5 million in residential damage, $750,000 in commercial damage, and damage to public property in the amount of $890,000. And I would note that these are preliminary figures. And as has been noted in a media release that was issued this afternoon, the city continues to accept reports of damage. And we will provide supplemental information to the Virginia Department of Emergency Management as it is received. So at this point, we're awaiting further word from VDEM concerning the availability of assistance to both the city for damage to its property and to the owners of private properties from both the state and federal governments. And that's the current posture of our request. We've made the initial submission to VDEM, and now it's up to that agency to take the next step. But I hasten to add that there are certain resources that are available to our residents and businesses now. Mayor Oaks has already mentioned the efforts of the Stanton Creative Community Fund. They have established a flood damage support fund on the GoFundMe platform to provide assistance to businesses. Their goal is to raise $125,000. And as of the middle of the day today, they have raised $110,000. The Community Foundation of the Central Blue Ridge has established a Stanton Flood Relief Fund to provide assistance to residents and homeowners. They will work in coordination with the city to provide assistance and relief to those individuals taking into account damages reported to the city. That effort commenced on Tuesday, and so it's really just getting started. Dan Lehman reports to me this afternoon that they so far have raised $7,500. Shenandoah Valley Social Services has identified resources in the form of emergency assistance to low-income individuals with minor children in the household, and has also indicated that replacement SNAP benefits are available if individuals suffered loss of food purchased with SNAP benefits. We've already heard a great deal about the efforts of the SDVA. That organization has been a clearinghouse for community resources and volunteer opportunities. They have coordinated the donation and distribution of supplies. And I would note that that's been in cooperation with the Stanton Public Library. And I'd like to commend Sarah Scrobus, our Director of Library Services, for stepping forward on her own initiative to volunteer herself and her staff to work with SDVA on that effort. SDVA has been coordinating the deployment of those volunteer resources as well in a very effective manner. And as a part of the cooperative effort between the city and SDVA, today I authorized SDVA to use the vacant New Street retail space owned by the city and located next to the visitor center as a location to store relief supplies and to use that space as a point of distribution of those supplies. And I would echo Mayor Oaks' comments about Greg Beam, who has been a real force of nature himself in his efforts as a part of the response to the disaster. The Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission has also stepped forward as a source of information. Mayor Oaks spoke previously about Rebecca Joyce, who is the community program manager with CSPDC. She is extremely knowledgeable about flood relief. She's a resource available not only to the city government, and we have used her as a resource, but she has also offered to make herself available to business owners and residents who may need assistance, especially if it turns out that no state or federal assistance is available. She has a network of nonprofit foundations and organizations known to her which may be available to assist businesses and residents. And she also is knowledgeable about the Virginia Disaster Relief Fund, which is a Commonwealth of Virginia fund established as a tool of last resort when there are no other options. So if someone in need has exhausted every other opportunity and is still in need of relief, the Virginia Disaster Relief Fund may be available to those individuals. Let me share with you briefly the work done by the building official and his staff, John Glover and his staff. There are four residences in the city which have suffered basement wall collapses which render them uninhabitable as determined by the building official. That office has been providing assistance and guidance to residents of these properties, making daily visits to provide that assistance and guidance. The residents have been advised that the homes can be reoccupied once the utilities have been checked and repaired by a private contractor. The shoring and stabilization that need to occur has already occurred. But this next step of reconnecting the utilities must occur before the homes can be reoccupied. And they have even provided assistance to one of our senior citizens whose home suffered only minor damage and remained habitable. But the individual was in need of assistance, and the building officials' office connected her with an organization that was providing that assistance. Public Works has really shown up and carried the laboring oar in the days since Saturday night. Much of this has already been noted. Public Works has provided ongoing extra trash collection in the Downtown Service District. As of yesterday, additional trash collection in residential areas upon request has been offered. We did, at citizen's suggestion, arrange for the landfill to be opened on Saturday afternoon in my thanks to Greg Thomason of the Augusta Regional Landfill and his staff for turning on a dime, and I think probably within 30 minutes, opening that facility, which required, you know, several individuals showing up for work. It's not simply a matter of opening the gate and providing the access. I think Greg was there himself and brought in four members of the staff to operate the facility over the course of four hours on Sunday afternoon. Public Works has been cleaning streets and sidewalks nonstop, and they've been assisted in that effort with the city of Waynesboro. And I'd like to extend my thanks to city manager Mike Hamp for his offer of assistance as well as the Public Works Department in Waynesboro for providing that assistance. Earlier this week, they lent a street sweeper to the cleanup effort, and we've had some further discussions. Mr. Hamp and I have had further discussions about additional possible assistance in the days ahead. Public Works has already completed repairs to damaged city infrastructure, and other repairs are underway. There's been a repair completed to the entrance to the Johnson Street parking garage right at the corner with Central Avenue. Repair of sidewalks on Central Avenue and Augusta Street are underway. A retaining wall on Berkeley Place, which collapsed, has been stabilized, as have the utilities in that location. There was a consulting engineer who visited the site today with Public Works staff in order to provide guidance concerning the repair. There's a contractor on standby to begin that repair. And we heard today about the work of the Historic Preservation Commission. There are particular sensitivities involved because this retaining wall is in an historic district. It has historic characteristics, and there will be care taken to, when it's repaired and rebuilt, to make sure that it fits with the surrounding environment. We've received an initial estimate for the repair of the Johnson Street parking garage itself. This is just a very preliminary figure, but we're talking in the neighborhood of $100,000 for that repair. Separately, we have had issues in the parks. And so Public Works and Parks and Recreation have been working together concerning those repairs. There has been potential damage to both pools at each of Montgomery Hall Park and Gypsy Hill Park, as well as damage to fencing, athletic field sidewalks, and footbridges at Gypsy Hill Park. Public Works in the last two days has provided distribution of sandbag materials. Yesterday, distributed 26 tons of sand and 600 bags. And today took delivery of an additional 18 tons of sand donated by Acres Sand and Stone, which is a business in Augusta County. And so my thanks to that business for contributing to the effort and for the local business owner, whose name escapes me, but the owner of Vinyl Asylum on Central Avenue, who I think played a key role in making that possible. And then we have also, you know, we were slated to resume the imposition of parking fees at our city parking facilities this past Monday. And administratively, I made the decision to defer that by one week. So we will resume that, resume those charges on Monday, August 17. And then finally, you know, we have to have people who pull all of this information together and get it out. So our communications team, which comprises Lee Catlin, who is our communications consultant, Morgan Smith, our executive assistant in the city manager's office, and Katie Campbell, who's the sales and marketing professional in the tourism department, have all stepped up, along with Leslie Beauregard, our assistant city manager. And we have been making sure that the public is promptly and fully informed about what the city is doing, what our partners are doing, and how we're responding to the emergency. So in closing, I just wanted to express my deep appreciation for the efforts of the community, for the efforts of council members, and for the efforts of all city employees, especially our first responders and our Public Works and Park and Recreation personnel. Thank you.
What a heartwarming report. Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. And again, to everyone, thank you so much on behalf of the city council. All right. All right, next on the agenda, matters from the city manager. Was there anything further?
I think I've spoken enough now, ma'am.
I think you covered it quite well. All right, next is matters from the public. Now, let's take... Do we have anyone waiting in the room? Hang on one second. There's one, okay. Hold on one second, Mr. Jennings. As far as matters from the public, you have five minutes to speak. Please state your name, your address, and please address your comments to the council, and please note personal attacks towards any individual council member. And we will take callers from Zoom first before the in-person audience. So, Mr. Rosenberg, do you see the one... Ms. Beauregard, do you see the one caller? I'm trying to see them.
The caller, whose number ends in the digits 68, are you on the line?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address, and address council.
Okay, sure, great. Yes, my name is Mitch Marguzzi, and I live at 130 South Jefferson Street. I just wanted to call in to speak to some of the discussions that were had during your work session earlier. Specifically, I would like to speak about the inappropriate authorization of council security provided by the Sheriff's Department in July. It seemed to have a vice mayor and his brother the sheriff. It was rather frustrating to me, to say the least, and absolutely infuriating, once I realized the gravity of what is happening behind the scenes between certain city council members and the sheriff's office, which involves backing deals to redistribute taxpayer dollars without the full goat of council, a proper budget, and then all the authority to do so. I question the legality of it, but even more so, I know the immorality of it. And I find it rather disturbing that you have been so blatant in your disregard for proper governance, and wonder, who is responsible for overseeing the ethics of your actions and whether or not you follow proper protocols? If there's no one with the authority to hold you responsible, then I guess the only option is for me, for Stanton's residents, for other justice-seeking advocates, and citizens concerned about fiscal responsibility to keep shining a light on your standing. Quite frankly, I find your actions to be a major disservice to all of our residents, regardless of their politics. I mean, for one, your behaviors are fiercely irresponsible. You cannot even offer legitimate reasons as to the need for council security, much less an appropriate solution. Second, I heard how you tried to skirt around admitting to the blatant nepotism of political favors being passed out by simply saying, "A city council member requests security." It is obvious that a few of you are having trouble with transparency. Last, but certainly not least, although I appreciated all of your encouraging words about the solidarity of Stanton residents in the midst of our recent struggle, but it's not be remiss in pointing out the fear-mongering that was used during your work session that incorporated covertly racist sentiments, such as Darby saying we need security, especially in the current and present political climate. Do you mean the Black Lives Matter social justice movement that has been at the heart of political conversations lately? Or how about Robinson saying, "Never be from this stage as long as I am on this council"? I don't know who you are scared of and need protecting from, but you singled out Aaron, and I know you must be aware that I'm one of your biggest critics and loudest to protest here in council and in my emails, but I can assure you, had you responded to our emails or even tried to have a conversation with us about the issues contributing to our justified anger, you wouldn't be blinded by your ignorance on social equity issues and your refusal to try to see things clearly. In fact, instead of giving a proper response to my last email, encouraging you to participate in locally facilitated class on anti-racism to help you understand, one of you, I don't know which one, instead shared my personal email to your now-elected representative with a friend of yours, who then used social media to berate me for communicating with you. Just agility is the problem. It harms our community and prevents constructive dialogue. And we need lots more constructive dialogue because it is obvious that you lack the capacity to grasp the context of social justice issues that you are being called to address. I would love to have those conversations with you directly so that you might gain a greater perspective on the harm that you keep committing. I invite you to reach out to me so that I can gain clarity about your intent and you can gain understanding about your impact. Thank you.
All right, are there any additional callers?
One more.
All right. Mr. Rosenberg, can you identify the caller, please?
Is the caller, whose number ends in 00, on the line? Please state your name and address, and address council.
Hi, my name is Allison Corfata. I live at 402 Barrier Court. I want to start by affirming everything that the previous caller stated. And Councilwoman Darby, I would love to see some type of proof of the vague, quote, "threatening" conversations that you brought up in the work session, that apparently there was some talk of, I don't know what, but I'd love to see printouts from that on social media. In addition, I'm really confused about Councilperson Claffey's opposition to the Recreation Advisory Committee or anyone else looking at the golf course financials. If all you want is people to share their opinions about the course, then why not stop wasting city staff time and just create a survey and send it out to the public? Publish it in the media, encourage people to call in or send emails. But if you want to make an actual informed decision about what to do with the golf course, why not look at the entirety of the golf course, including anything revolving around financials? You can't just have a group of people telling Chris Tuttle at Parks and Rec what to do at the golf course when they don't know a full picture of how it's being run and the financials behind it. If you want to find out why youth and women don't golf more, then allow the Recreation Committee to take a comprehensive look. I don't know if you know this, but the Recreation Advisory Committee has plenty of time to do this. I've spent the past couple of months attending committee meetings. I've asked City Manager Rosenberg a few times now via email, and I've never gotten a response. If the city has ever done an independent or just citywide audit of their committees and boards to see if they're actually doing what they're supposed to be doing. As of July 16, your Recreation Advisory Committee had not met in a year. And I got that from an advisory committee member who informed me that Chris Tuttle told her, quote, "that they don't meet unless, quote, 'city council requests the board's advice or approval on a matter.'" So just request their advice or approval on the matter. That's literally what they're there for, and you won't be wasting more staff dollars, payroll dollars, on coming up with a comprehensive report that you then reject out of hand because you don't want to look, for some reason, at the golf course's financials. Thank you.
All right, are there any additional... There is one more call from Zoom, Mr. Rosenberg.
Is the caller, whose number ends in 92, on the line?
Hi, this is Richard Galt, 130 Hope Street, St. Anthony. Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Hello, do you hear me? Despite what I consider some unethical campaign methods that the new council members used to be elected to the council, everybody in the town who paid attention knew that you were elected to the council. As far as I'm concerned, the 73% who didn't vote, those are the people who have my anger. I have no goodwill towards any of you. You are elected. I hope they want you to do the best for our city. But every time I think that things are going to get better, something comes up like the security business that I heard tonight for the third time. That this is really, if it's not utterly illegal, it's certainly unethical, that the sheriff shows up without the council full council knowing about it and now accepts to get paid. For one thing, you, four people who are now the majority of the council, are supposed to be conservatives. They're supposed to be concerned with how we spend our money. You know, back when, in last winter, last December, when the angry gun fanatic showed up en masse, some not even in the city, one of them even threatening Councilman Holmes because they were going to boycott his restaurant. Councilman Holmes did not ask for security. The newer calls, that I know, that came in from some of the council members, angry with them, threatening them, they didn't call for security. Now, here we have this one guy who says that he's known to be... He's well-known in Stanton, he's known to be harmless, and he's going to say he's coming to scare outside their home and boycott? Well, you know, that's part of the job. If I'm afraid of this ominous lie, then he's gone. Don't take the job. Because if you don't accept any criticism, you shouldn't be on the council. Now, the other thing is, it's very clear that the police chief is the person in charge of the security. So if you do want security, then it's the police chief and not the sheriff. The sheriff has no business being involved in this, and that really smacks of nepotism in the first degree. So, and I am really disappointed with what Mr. Claffey is suggesting, that there'd be an alternating order thing between the sheriff and the police department. The sheriff has no right to be providing security if the police chief. Number one. Number two, it's the fanatical gun people that got you elected, and you know damn well that's the truth. So if you go ahead and have, which I fully expect you to do, have some open meeting for discussing the Second Amendment resolution, well, it's then that people like me would want security because we are the violent people who approach it. I have guns, and I have no fear that my guns are going to be confiscated by any law. It's completely ridiculous to think so, and you all know that very well. So if you're going to go ahead with that, well, then you're not going to have people like me come into city council because we fear these angry gun fanatics. So then I would want security, not for you folks, but for the people on the council who know that this is a stupid thing to do, that we have nothing to do with state law, and in fact, you are sworn to obey state law. And if you pass the Second Amendment resolution, then you're saying you're not going to follow state law if you don't agree with it. You don't decide what's constitutional. The Supreme Court does. But again, I really do want to work with you, and I hope you get some sense. And I do not want to see four to three votes all through this next year or next two years, just like the Florida poll vote in the Supreme Court. You know that that's political, and it's not apolitical, and you're not supposed to be political. You're supposed to be concerned with the safety and advancement and security of our city, and not at all. And it should not be political.
All right, sir, you're fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. The clock started late. Is there anyone else? All right, now, we will now accept matters from the public, from the audience.
Well, Jenny, 332 Charlene State. First, our mayor has definitely showed outstanding leadership. She is definitely a leader, so thank you for that. And another thing, and bless me, you advised the citizens to get a hold of their insurance company right away about flood insurance. You also made a statement, didn't have flood insurance, contact them anyway. And then the second key, on behalf of which the city manager and his staff there was open that dump up, was you ain't got no place to take the crashes. It was said, start cleaning up. So that was the two keys. And you and the city manager and staff definitely did an outstanding job. And as a concerned citizen, I want to thank you very much. And as far as later after Ms. Meek Rice, Councilwoman Meek Rice, in her Facebook comments, I learned a long time ago, people were living glass houses through the throw rocks. And she thinks I'm kidding you, asked her son. Thank you much.
Are there any other comments from members of the audience?
Mayor Oakes and members of City Council, I felt that I needed to come before you this evening. Oh, my name is Raymond Shaner. I live at 300 Cardinal Street, Stanton, Virginia.
Thank you.
I felt that I needed to come and make some comments to the council this evening. In listening to one of your prior council meetings, and I was not here, you had an individual show up expressing their displeasure with the name Stonewall Jackson Hotel. That historic name, Stonewall Jackson, deserves to be held in reverence in our history. History is what has made us what we are. We cannot change it. By inserting your will to take that away from the rest of us is not a thing of consideration. The comments made by that individual were insulting to this council, as well as threatening, or at least that's what I perceive from their inflection and their voice. As they said when they left, "Do something about it, or we will do something about it." And I think that was inappropriate. I think it was threatening to the city council. And if there was some way to arrest that individual, I certainly would stand behind that 100%. And I'd like to go on and say that political correctness has no place in city council. My interpretation of political correctness is it's a piece of excrement that you try to pick up by the clean end. There is no such thing. There is no such thing as political correctness. You either tell it as it is and express your opinion, either accept it, reject it, but then move on. I stand fast for traditions and respect all individuals and their traditions. I don't want the city to be swayed by the noise from a few. Be just to all mankind. Be just to all womankind. This is a constitutional government, not seen by all, for the good of all, and the majority should rule me, not a few who clamor loudly. Be respectful to all and demand respect in return. Lastly, I'd like to say, stand by our police and the sometimes impossible job that they do. They deserve our respect and appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments from members of the audience? All right, hearing none. As mayor of the City of Stanton, I now call this meeting adjourned.